Everyone to the Union Township Board of Trustees meeting, we're just after six o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started. If you could please rise and then join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, thank you all for being here tonight. And Mr. Campbell, we left the record reflect that all three trustees are present. And tonight is our zoning hearing. We'll be hearing four zoning cases tonight. And so if you could, for each specific case, we do have comment cards back there. If you could fill those out, if you have anything you'd like to say, whether you're for or against a specific case, but fill those comment cards out, and then we'll collect those. And so therefore, we can have your name and address on file. We'll need that for the record. But we'll go ahead and kick things off with our first zoning case. And it is Union Township zoning case four dash two three dash O as an Oscar. And Mr. McCormick, would you like to go and present that, please?
Yes. So the first case here is for the Millbacks Properties LLC, owner applicant. Site location is eight sixty-seven State Route one twenty-five. Parcel number is referenced here on this slide in the staff report. It's a one point five through four acre property in the Ohio Pike Commercial Corridor overlay area. Here's the subject property, vicinity view of the area. It's on the corner of one twenty-five and Dykman Lane, on the southwestern corner of that intersection. The zoning of the property is B, business B one, with the adjoining property to the north. And east also zone B one, and with the other surrounding properties zoned R one and R two. As I mentioned before, the property is in the Ohio Pike Signal one twenty-five corridor. And that, and the comp plan calls for in that area, access control, site development to be conducted in a manner that focuses on maximizing land use efficiency within full development, reinvestment, or redevelopment initiatives. For commercial redevelopment, the use of traditional building materials, adequate vegetative buffering, and landscaping strategies along shared property lines, and landscaping enhancements along the corridor frontage is also required. Next part of the staff report refers to Article thirteen. We've got section thirteen oh seven, which refers specifically to commercial corridors. And in the slides, I've also got section thirteen hundred, which outlines the purpose of the focus overlayed areas. And section thirteen ten is the outlines the process for which someone can apply for a certain zoning certificate in a focus area. And final item there is the board trustee shall consider overlay district application, make appropriate findings of fact, and adopt a motion approving or denying the application. Some background about this particular property, the applicant is planning a one thousand one hundred and forty square foot expansion on the site, which is outlined here in the plan. And that's for the purpose of gaining a dedicated space for vehicle, advanced driver assistance systems calibrations. And this is a view of what the proposed building addition would look like. The addition would be here on the right, would match the exterior block appearance of the building. A review of this particular application indicates the proposal appears to be consistent with the recommendations of land use plan, as well as the fines and specific purposes of the overlay district regulations. Applicant has proposed a building that's consistent with traditional building materials with no new signage. The parking and driveway areas in the current plans are sufficient, as there would be no additional parking necessary for customers, or any loading areas for the proposed use. There's already a sidewalk along one twenty-five for pedestrian connectivity. The landscaping buffer would ultimately need to be enhanced a little bit along the western property line adjacent to the existing residential area, as well as around the relocated scream dumpster. And then finally, there's no additional exterior lighting being proposed at this time. In terms of the site conditions, this is the, these are the slides indicate the pictures from the site inspection. This is looking northwest from Dykman Lane along one twenty-five. Property's on the left. This is looking the opposite way, southeast, that same intersection. This is looking at the site from Dykman Lane from one twenty-five. The addition would be on the right-hand side of that building. This is looking across from Dykman Lane. The applicant also owns that property as well. This is looking south to southwest, and the area that the addition would be essentially where the, in the area where that dumpster is now, which would be relocated to the front of the property. This is looking east at the adjacent residential area. This is looking southwest to south, from left to right, from the proposed addition area. In terms of the actions required, in accordance with section thirteen ten of the zoning resolution, the board trustees' role is to either enter a motion to approve, modify, or deny the focus overlay district application, which in this case consists of expansion of an existing commercial garage, estimate, or if any further modifications deemed appropriate by the board. Recommended modifications are noted here on this slide and in the last page or two of the staff report. Main items being to address any concerns from related agencies or departments, meeting in more detailed landscaping plans, including types of plantings, along with heights and sizes recommended along the western edge of the property. I said eastern earlier, meant western, as well as the perimeter of the proposed dumpster enclosure. Need a lighting plan. It would need some additional minor administrative items to be added. That concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Mr. Becker, do you have any questions for me?
No.
Mr. Loeb?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Well done. Okay, so at this time, we will open this zoning case, zoning case four dash two three dash O as an Oscar up for any public comments. This is a public hearing, so I'll have to swear again, but anybody that is a proponent, that is for this case, now is your chance to go ahead and speak. Okay, seen, seen none? Is there anyone that is against this case? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close public comments on this. Okay, gentlemen, I'm going to entertain a motion for the approval of Union Township zoning case four dash two three dash zero, or sorry, Oscar, request for approval for the proposed overlay district plan involving the potential expansion of an existing commercial garage.
Shall move.
Second.
Gentlemen, discussion.
Yeah, I drove down there, I think it was yesterday, and I met with one of the, one of the staff who kind of showed me around a little bit. Looks like there's, doesn't even look like there's a whole lot of dirt movement, that's either going to be required. There's plenty of flat land right there to just annex an additional bay. I'm glad they're expanding, and I didn't have any issues with anything I saw. I'm good with it.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Mr. Loeb?
No further discussion for me.
Yeah, so, said likewise, drove by it, I'm actually extremely familiar with this business. But with that, I discovered a week, week and a half ago, which business I like to go visit before we vote on them. And the company I work for, I'm the director of sales and operations for a company, and we do all of our business there. So with that, gentlemen, I'm going to abstain from voting on this one, so there's no conflict. However, I am absolutely for it, if I was to vote, just so you know. So, then no further discussion. Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Abstain.
Motion carries.
All right, great. Moving on to our next case, zoning case, Union Township zoning case eight dash zero five dash Z as in Zulu. It is for Children's Hospital. And Mr. McCormick, would you please take this over?
Yes, so this is for the Children's Hospital Medical Center. Site is located on Ivy Point Boulevard. Parcel number is referenced in the staff report and also on this slide. Involves nine point six acre site, and the zoning is PD. It's part of the Ivy Point Commercial Park PD. The proposed improvements would be about a hundred and nine, a hundred and ten square, thousand square feet, two-story improvement for the medical center. Present zoning, you can see here is PD. A lot of the adjacent PD is all part of that same Ivy Point Commerce PD that was rezoned in two thousand and eight. You can see the adjoining property to the north is business, and some property there across the interstate is The Horizon two twenty thirty comprehensive land use plan indicates the subject properties located within Ivy Point Commercial Corridor, which identifies the site as appropriate for high-quality office uses, retail uses, and some residential uses. Furthermore, the plan calls for mixed-use development, monument signage, high-quality facade signage, or designing, and pedestrian connectivity. And the land use plan specifically referenced both mixed-use development, as well as senior housing development priorities of the township. Major amendment process is noted here in Article six, as shown in the staff from the slide. The major amendment process has been what's been undertaken in the Ivy Point Commercial Park since the approval was initially obtained in February of, it says two thousand and six, but I think it's supposed to say two thousand and eight. The original approval consisted of preliminary concept layout for the project site, which incorporated numerous multi-story Class A buildings, organized into a campus setting, a large recreational park with walking trail, and an office warehousing area. Since the original plan was conceptual in nature, many final development details were excluded with the intention of being to review and approve individual users or developments within the park through the planned development major amendment process. First major amendment was of a proposal by Cincinnati United Contractors to develop a portion of the park for TQL. First stage of development was completed in two thousand and seven. So I think the date was correct, two thousand and six. Second amendment occurred subsequently for Clarone County Public Library. Ultimately, the library opted moved to another location, had another amendment in two thousand and eight for a second hundred thousand square foot office building. Two thousand and twelve, TQL received approval for a new construction of a hundred and thirty-three thousand square foot facilities, office tower. And two thousand and fifteen, there was another amendment to allow for the development of a hundred and nineteen senior apartments on Club Pike. Mercy Health continued construction with an eighty-eight thousand square foot building in two thousand and eighteen, with Sheriff Faks Credit Union constructing a four-story headquarters building in two thousand and nineteen. And most recently, TQLs have constructed two additions onto the headquarters, one in two thousand and twenty, and one now underway, totaling more than two hundred and fifty-five hundred thousand square feet. Purpose of the PD is referenced in section six eighty and six eighty-two. Land uses within the PDs are consistent, have to be consistent with the use, design, and details contained in the approved PD. PD uses can include what are allowed in B one and M one districts for substantial uses as determined by the Board of Trustees. Section six eighty-four outlines the elements that are necessary to be included in the application process for PDs. Six eighty-five, the property to develop in accordance with approved PD plan, the plan shall remain forever in effect, subject to any future amendments or rezoning. And six eighty-five, any part of any approved PD plan, or formal plans under regulations for which the development is not completed within five years, the day the board trustee's approval shall expire. Part of the property shall remain zoned PD, however, no development shall occur or continue until a new plan is approved for that part of the property or the property is otherwise rezoned. Six eighty-six, the Board of Trustees shall consider the amendment and adopt a motion approving, denying, or modifying the amended plan. Prior to any final decision, the Board of Trustees may make further data, may direct further data be provided if necessary to make an informed decision, and the Board should make appropriate findings of fact as part of the decision-making process. So here is the site with the topo. You see two seventy-five to the west, Ivy Point to the east. And to the south, the parking area that you see is for TQL. There's the plan, proposed plan of the facility overlay there, along with, you can see the building and the parking. This is a, an expansion, expanded of the plan, view of the plan. And this is the land, proposed landscaped area for the plan. And these are some three D renderings of that proposal. So the applicant has proposed a project of regional significance of the aforementioned property with appropriate ingress, egress, and site improvements to accommodate the significant building area proposed. It's anticipated that the proposed general medical use facility will be considerable, considerable investment on the parcel. The proposed building elevation reveals an attractive building, with the majority of the building consisting of brick and glass windows, and similar architecture to the existing structures within Ivy Point. Glass with metal fins are proposed for the front and rear of the building, along with colored metal panels, traditional to previous Children's Hospital developments. A review of the other site improvements illustrates the continuation of the walking path and the existing stuff of TQL parking lot. The plan reveals a single access point to the site from existing curb cut located on Ivy Point Boulevard. Proposed access drive would serve the southern children's lot, would also provide future access to the property to the north, also owned by Children's Hospital Medical Center. Ample landscaping has been provided throughout the development plan, which was shown on the previous slide. This is another view of the site before the parking area was expanded, kind of a three D view. And in accordance with sections six eighty to six eighty-seven of the zoning resolution, the Board of Trustees are to enter a motion to approve, approve modification, or deny the applicant's request for major amendment to plan development district, estimate editor with modifications deemed necessary. These slides here were taped, are pictures of the staff inspection. This is looking north from the access, proposed access to Ivy Point Boulevard. This is looking south from the access to Ivy Point Boulevard. You see TQL in the background. This is looking across from the site, from the access drive. This is looking from the site towards TQL to the southwest. This is looking from southwest to west. You can see interstate set two seventy-five there in the background. This is looking northwest from the access to Ivy Point Boulevard. And this is looking essentially from the interstate. I did not take this picture because I found that it might be easier to use a Google image, instead of trying to stand at the interstate and take this picture. So that, that's what the view looks like as of, I think, last August, if I remember right, looking northeast from the interstate. Recommended modifications, applicant would need to address any concerns from related other agencies and departments, which we know from our discussion with them yesterday, that that is underway. They need to provide a signage plan, which they are proposing to do at a later point in time. And that would need to be reviewed administratively and approved. They would need to provide a detailed information for screening around the rear machinery area. Need to provide an acceptable material for fencing around the therapy area, the dumpster enclosure. And the final elevation plans would need to include emphasis on the visibility of necessary equipment being placed on the roof, with visible roof units to be shielded. All those last three items were reviewed with staff yesterday, and staff was comfortable with the proposals. We just did not have them in hand. So we are in pretty good shape with numbers three through five on the staff report. That concludes my report. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Mr. Becker, any questions?
No.
Mr. Loeb?
No, thank you, Mr. McCormick.
Mr. Dills, may I address one matter?
Please, please.
And this, Children's has been in possession of this land for a period of time. There's been some ongoing negotiations from a period ago about certain economic development agreements with this property. Those negotiations have been ongoing. We anticipate they'll be brought back to the trustees, meeting very near in the future. So I just ask if you consider also approving this subject of the satisfactory resolution of those agreements.
You wanted me to add that on to the motion?
As a, as a recommendation.
Okay, so say that again?
This be approved, subject to the satisfactory resolution of those economic development agreements currently pending.
Okay. Mr. McCormick, if you could just do a better job at maybe standing on the highway taking pictures for us, I'd really appreciate that. So at this time, I'm going to open up this case for Children's Hospital, for anyone that is a proponent, that is for this case. Now is your time to speak. Come on up. I'm going to swear again, since this is a public hearing. And then one at a time, what I'll do is I'll go and swear you in. Well, you can, you can come up as well, that's fine, that's fine. I'll just, I'll just do you both, you can both speak at the same time, it's fine. Go and raise your right hand for me. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so hope you got it?
I do.
Great. And then go and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Mara Moranberry. That's a hyphenated last name.
Great.
My work address is three 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 Burnett Avenue, mail location eight thousand, Cincinnati, Ohio four five two two nine.
Perfect.
But I am a proud Union Township resident, so I can give you that address too, if you'd like.
Let me go and swear you in, so you guys can both tag me, that's fine. And then, sir, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so hope you got it?
I do.
Great. And then name and address, please, for the record.
Yes, my name is Michael Browning. I'm also at three 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 Burnett Avenue, mail location eight thousand four five two two nine.
Great, great. Please, go ahead.
So, thank you for having us this evening. I, we are really excited to be here. I just, I have been involved in this project. I was the individual who was responsible for purchasing the property. So this journey started for me around twenty-ten, twenty-eleven. We've had some stops and starts. This is the right time for us to build this facility. I am glad we made those stops, because we think that what we're bringing forward today is even more robust and appropriate for this region, this township, the county, the entire region. And I don't know that we would have started there. So I am glad to say that. We plan to build an approximately one hundred and ten thousand square foot facility with a number of programs, including surgery, which was not part of our original plan, and an offering of, a robust offering of specialty services here, including urgent care. We are concentrating on the development of the south side of our really twenty acre parcel. So we're focused on this just, just under ten acre parcel, leaving room for our future growth in this region. This will be our door from the thirty-two corridor into the greater Cincinnati area as well. So we look forward to serving the kids of counties, even to the, to the east of here. We are estimating that we will have at least two hundred staff members here. That will be in two shifts, with approximately a hundred and seventy-five staff members during first shift, and another twenty-five employees during the second shift. And I am, does anybody have any questions for me about real estate and our land use? That's really my forte. If not, I'll pass it over to Mike, who's in charge of planning and construction.
Sure, please. Go ahead, Mike, yeah.
No, trying to echo, reiterate too much. Thank you for hosting us. We're so excited to commence with this project. Our intention is to proceed this summer. We have about a two-year build with a couple-month ramp up of loading and occupancy planning, and then, and then move into this space. Mara mentioned four operating rooms. This is all outpatient, urgent care, subspecialty clinics. The two hundred employees, most of those would be dedicated to this site, but there would be a rotation as we run multi-disciplinary clinics. There would be a rotation of certain subspecialties that would come here on, at different frequencies. But I look to this to be a very robust and busy site. We're happy to celebrate. Yesterday, we had a big announcement. We are recently ranked the number one Children's Hospital in the country.
Nice, congratulations.
And this is a key piece, a key centerpiece of our regional strategy and regional draw. So in addition to seeing many of our families closer to home, which is a huge goal for us, is access, access, access to families, this is also a regional draw site, as we work on our regional master planning. So hopefully pulling more people to this area from counties further east of here, and to the northeast of here, and Kentucky too.
Excellent, excellent. Gentlemen, do you have any questions at all? Please go ahead, Mr. Becker.
Yeah, so I feel excited to have you guys here. Been looking forward to this build for several years. As I just pointed out, the, you know, stops and starts with it all, and clay to see it's finally underway, or going to be real soon. So the, so you got two parcels, the second ten acre parcel, what, what do you see in your crystal ball? What's down the road with that?
So, we, there is a topography, the reason to slice it there is really, there is a significant drop between the property that we bought from CUC and the property that we bought from the Eichols family. So we've reserved that for future buildings. And we have master planned that there is room to accommodate two additional, up to fifty thousand square foot buildings. I, I'm not committing that we're building fifty thousand square foot buildings there, but that, that is the capacity. So, and we, and we worked with the county and the township when we, just after purchasing the property, to run all the needed utilities along Ivy Point. We donated the land to the county to put Ivy Point through, to give that access. This is our, this is our eastern hub, and so we, we want to grow here.
That's great. Any timeline, two years, five years, ten years, any guesses?
I, I think it's, it's pretty tough to predict right now. I think a lot of this will depend on that, that same regional strategy that I talked about, and the success of this site. I think there's a full commitment that there would be some sort of build-out. And part of it will also have to do with potential partnerships that could or could not be enabled by, or have this project be accountable for.
Fair enough.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Mr. Loeb?
Just, for one with that, yeah, excited for the project. Been on the board coming up four years now, and heard discussions about it, but been really energized by the fact of seeing some traction get done with it. So, and, and thank you for your, Mara, your commitment and dedication to this, and as a proud resident.
I'm a neighbor.
Oh, okay. Well, good, okay. Even more fun. Well, it hits all very close to home. And we've, myself, I got a five, three, and one-year-old, and we've had some time down at Cincinnati Children's and the Mason location. And so I looked through, you know, the services that you're going to offer to the community here. And that's just really, really great to be able to see, because access to healthcare is a great advancer in the quality of life for our residents and in our community. So I just strongly, strongly support that and echo that, and happy to see what you're going to be able to do here. And then, yeah, the crystal ball that can come, and whatever that may be. But I'm, for one, just thrilled with this initial build-out. So, yeah, absolutely. This is very touching. So thank you both for the presentation, and I think a beautiful PD that's been presented. So thank you.
Building's beautiful, by the way. Who, who designed it?
Our, our friends and-
Our, our friends and, and partners here, GBBN Architects.
Yeah.
Bear Becker Civil Engineering and Master Construction.
Yeah, great, fits right in.
It's been a team effort.
He'd be an associate or a mechanic.
Love it, I mean, right off 275, a lot of visibility, it's very pretty, good job, well done.
Just for the record, Mr. Chairman, Bear Becker's no.
No relation.
Are you sure?
I wasn't that fortunate.
The, no, we're, we're excited to be partners. I love this, I love that we can help see, get this over the finish line. So you're saying you're going to break ground this summer, and this build right here is going to be finished, Lord willing, in two years? Love it, love it, love it. Personal question, can you handle children's broken bones at this facility?
So up to urgent care level.
Yeah.
There is, there will be ortho clinic, radiate, there is small radiology department, MRI.
Okay.
And minor orthopedic surgeries.
Fair enough, fair enough.
And then 23 hour short stay after surgery. So anything above urgent care is to us to go to our Mercy Department.
Yeah, the, my daughter broke her arm doing gymnastics on a trampoline, went to Anderson Mercy and waited two, three, four hours. Oh, sorry, we don't do broken bones, you gotta go to a children's hospital. Oh, great, so two deductibles and then two o'clock in the morning finally, so, so, good, I'm glad to hear that, that's good, so, but excellent, love it, I'm excited to get this over the finish line, I think all the residents want this, it's a need, there's definitely, definitely a need here, so we love having you as a partner, we are partners, make sure to reach out if we can help at all, absolutely, okay?
I wanted to confirm, we, we have been working with Susan and, and staff about the economic development issues. We, we don't have any issue with that, we are working through the, the language that, that we'll be signing.
Perfect.
The children's team's been wonderful to work with.
Love it.
And we're just so excited to have you here, just need a little bit longer to get that over the finish line.
Yeah. That's all we wanted to hear.
One more thing, I think that goes into the overall investment, the approach, and the master planning for this region too, as far as your team goes, you've got deep data on that, and you're, you know, a great partner, community partner for us as well, we recently executed a contract with Eastgate Mall Route 32 corridor redevelopment plan to do master planning session right now, and I think it would be early enough still that, from your team, we have part of a business advisory board or a type of stakeholder feedback and support, share that master planning that you're available to share, or however, that can be a force multiplier, but I think that would be huge, because if you look at the map and the overhead, you know the area well, Eastgate Mall's just on the north side of you too, so we want people to be just as thrilled to see your building as, as they'll be thrilled one day to see the Eastgate Mall area, so, and we'd love to have you be a big part of that as well.
We're happy to speak with you.
Thank you both, very much, yeah, appreciate you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak that is a proponent of this zoning case? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Is there anyone that is an opponent of this zoning case? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comments. Gentlemen, I will entertain a motion for Union Township zoning case eight dash zero five dash Zulu, a request for major amendment to a PD district to allow Children's Hospital Medical Center, subject to satisfying, ongoing economic development agreements.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion, gentlemen?
I'm all in.
Mr. Logue?
I'll just, I'll identify for the, the record with your motion there for the, the five recommendations, I'm sure the staff, and I'm sure they're aware of, so working through county engineer, Clement County Water, Sewer District, County Building Department, the Township Fire, regulatory agencies, jurisdiction over the proposed development for any final township action, that's item one. Item two, applicant need to provide sign package as well. Item three, applicant may need to provide detail for screening around the rear machinery area. And item four, material for fencing around therapy area, dumpster enclosures. Item five, final elevation plans being included with emphasis on visibility of the equipment need to be placed on the roof, so just kind of shorten those up, but to make it clear, that's pretty much our standard, so.
Perfect.
Sound good?
Okay. No more discussion, Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, guys, appreciate you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to our third zoning case out of four, this is Union Township zoning case three dash two three dash O is an Oscar, request for approval for proposed overlay district plan involving a potential development of a new sand volleyball facility. Mr. McCormick, please take over, sir.
Yes, so this case is, applicant is Mr. Brett Griffiths, the owner is TC Properties of OKI LLC. Site location is, address is 508 Round Bottom Road, this is a little aisle sequence for what's in that area. Parcel number is identified here in this slide, and is also in the first item of the staff report. It's a proposed five acre portion of a 36.443 parent acre acreage parcel. The zoning is industrial, and the parcel's located through the Little Miami Lower East Fork corridor. Parcel, as you see here, is located off Round Bottom Road across from the Barge Salt Road intersection. The zoning of the property and all of the adjacent property within approximately 400 feet is manufacturing, it's industrial. In the 2030 Conference of Landes Plan, the proposal is within that lower Mi, Little Miami Lower East Fork corridor, and during the previously adopted Conference of Planning effort, this corridor is identified as an environmentally sensitive area, large portions of the area contained within areas prone to irregular flooding from the Lower East Fork of the Little Miami River. Area remains primarily zoned for residential industrial use with several industrial pockets recently developing along Round Bottom Road. In this slide, we have the overlay district purpose in Article 13, Section 1300, sets out standards, regulations pertaining specific geographic features or land uses for the health, safety, and morals of the township. Supplemental regulations are intended to be less restrictive than base zoning, so as to give the township trustees authority to implement specific purposes contained within the section, wherever there's a conflict, the overlay districts, regulations shall supersede the base district resident regulations. The focus overlay natural district area description, findings, and specific purpose and characteristics are referenced there on the second page of the staff report in Section 1305, referencing steep sloped areas, floodplains, wetlands, lakes, rivers, certain types of hillsides, and geologic formations, scenic areas, being the main purpose. Section 1310 sets forth the items that need to be submitted for the, a process for the zoning certificates in the focus areas, and Board Trustees ultimately shall consider the overlay application, make appropriate findings and facts, and adopt the motion of approving or denying the motion, or the application. This again is the site, this is the proposed five acre area with the initial road concept, and this is the proposed five acres in terms of the preliminary survey that we have received. Property is located approximately 700 feet north of Round Bottom Road, appears to be, have been zoned industrial since the inception of the zoning of the township. According to applicable flood insurance rate map panel, none of the proposed five acres of the parent tract lies within the 100-year floodplain or floodway. As noted earlier, the applicant is seeking to develop a new sand volleyball facility for Cincinnati's Sand Volleyball Club, which would involve the establishment of six indoor and six outdoor sand volleyball courts, as well as office, pro shop, cafe, kitchen, and restrooms. Review of the proposal indicates the use is consistent with the zoning district in which it's located, it's not in conflict with the adopted land use plan. Land use plan allows for lower intensity industrial uses throughout the corridor with cement filled uses provided that natural resources are protected, and to that end, this request does not impact a hillside at all or area with 20% slope or greater, does not involve the floodplain or flood prone area, and does not involve an area that's been identified as having significant natural resources, which is one of the few areas in that corridor where maybe that all can be said. Additionally, the plan identifies some industrial uses that are already present in the area and should be supported to the extent practical, therefore, the requested use is considered reasonable by staff. At the time of the report, the site has no direct access to a public, private street or road, however, the township is currently in the process of designing and engineering a new public road to serve the Hamilton Safe property, this property, and the property adjacent beyond to the northeast and southeast. Township expects that the roadway construction will be underway soon and be completed before the end of fall 2023. In terms of the other items in the staff report, the proposed structure appears to be consistent with the, those of the surrounding area from an architectural standpoint. Monument signs would be required for the site, limited to a height of no more than 12 feet measured from grade. Stormwater detention basin was planned in the southeastern portion of the site. Landscaping shown here in this slide would be incorporated in the site in a manner that's consistent with surrounding parcels, and the lighting plan has not been submitted at this time, however, it would be required for final review and approval. This is a rendering of what the site would look like. The parking orientation has changed, where the parking would be up against the, the building there, there would be a walking space between where the, the cars will park and the fenced area and the building. And this is looking north on the oblique. Hamilton Safe's not on that particular oblique because of the age of the oblique. In accordance to Section 1310, as mentioned earlier, the trustees were on the process either to enter motion to approve, modify, or deny the focus overlay application, along with any more, further modifications deemed necessary by the board. These are the pictures that staff took on the inspection, this is looking from the east to southeast, from the proposed access drive on Round Bottom Road. You see the Ready Rock sign there on the left. This is looking the opposite direction from west to northwest, left to right, and you see Hamilton Safe on the right, sites on the right, that's from the proposed access drive. This is looking from the proposed access drive across Round Bottom Road at Barge Salt Run. You see the railroad signs there as well. This is looking into that existing access towards the proposed access area, looking north and northwest. You see Ready Rock there in the right-hand side of the background. This is looking northeast across from the site. This is looking west towards the site from the proposed access drive, and this is looking to the northwest of, just a little more to the right if you're rotating from that last picture, from the proposed access drive area. Recommended modifications, applicant would need to address any concerns from related other agencies and departments. A walkway or path need to be included or shown between the proposed parking areas and the proposed building improvements. The applicant would need to submit a signage plan, which would need to be reviewed and approved administratively, and would also need to review or submit a lighting plan, which would need to be reviewed and approved administratively by staff. That concludes my report. Do you have any questions?
Joe, Mr. McCormick. Mr. Becker?
Yep.
Mr. Logue?
No, thank you, Mr. McCormick.
Good job. Okay, at this time, we're going to go and open up Union Township zoning case three dash two three dash O is an Oscar, and if there is anyone that is a proponent of the zoning case, come on forward if you are for this. Okay, seeing none, let's go and close that. Is there anyone that is a opponent of the zoning case that would not like to see this? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go and close public comments. Gentlemen, I am going to entertain a motion for Union Township zoning case three dash two three dash O is an Oscar, request for approval for proposed overlay district plan involving the potential development of a new sand volleyball facility.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, let's go and open for discussion. Mr. Becker?
I think it's awesome, looking forward to moving in.
All right. Fair enough. I like it. Mr. Logue?
Mr. Becker throwing me curveballs.
I like to keep you guessing.
It's, yeah, I'm, I'm very excited about this, it's been a strategic approach for the, the Board Trustees to, to acquire that land and work to integrate, and be able to energize that area with something new, that's a new amenity, a new attraction, so I'm excited for the fact that this company is relocating here and building out here. You know, I'm still a little hurt from, it kind of grows in the concept of, it was a Deerfield landed, the Eagle, and like a 50 West sand volleyball type concept build out and all that, and I, I feel like this is our, our tip of the iceberg for opening up this area and energizing it, because it's right off the highway, and it's just such a great location with so much traffic count that goes through, so I'm excited about that. So I think that there's, there's more to come, I think, in this area, but, yeah, just excited for something that's always just been considered an industrial area to get some new energy to it, so, I'm all for it.
Thank you, Mr. Logue. I'm going to call him out, I see Mr. Griffiths here, he's a good buddy of mine, you have stage fright, is that what it is? I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. The, I, I, I'm, I'm a patron of his, of your current business down there on Route 50 in Milford. I like being competitive, Mr. Becker, we talked about this in our last meeting, and so I love that we're stealing you from Milford, love Milford, but hey, you're coming over here to Union Township, I love it, I'm all for it, I love this concept, indoor, outdoor sand volleyball, count me as your customer, Mr. Griffiths, and love it, it's going to be great, and you're going to kickstart that development there on, on Round Bottom, right on the river, it's beautiful, great concept, and you're going to, I hope you do very well, fully support you on this. And so, I had introduced Mr. Griffiths and Ms. Ayers a year ago to try to get this deal done, and finally, we've got a deal done, and we can make it happen and get you over the finish line, so, great concept, we need this in Union Township, so. With that, gentlemen, Mr. Campbell, let's go and do a roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, Mr. Griffiths. Yeah.
Congratulations, thank you.
Do one question, but I haven't sworn you in, but it's a que, when are you going to break ground? Any idea? Ballpark?
We're waiting on everything to be finalized, but hopefully this fall.
Roger that, that's awesome, can't wait.
As soon as this gets done, we're ready to go.
What's your, what's your construct, yeah, that's your question.
About six months.
Six months to construct, that's it?
Maybe, maybe less.
Awesome, love it, can't wait, can't wait. Okay.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations. Okay, all right, moving on to our next and final zoning case of the evening, this is Union Township zoning case two dash two three dash Z is in Zulu, and before, I'm going to have, actually, we'll just go ahead and have Mr. McCormick, if you want to go and open this case up and describe it.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
This case is for Mount Carmel Farms LLC, applicant owner, site location's 4370 Mount Carmel Road, parcel number is listed in the staff report on this slide involving 11.711 acres. Existing zoning is a state residential, proposed zoning for the zone map amendment is for plan development, and that plan development would be to allow for landscaping uses, agricultural uses, nursery uses, residential uses, and indoor storage uses on the property. Subject property is located approximately 4,000 feet southeast of the Mount Carmel Road and Round Bottom Road intersection, which I don't think you can even see on the vicinity map here. Zoning of the subject property in Union Township's zone is state residential, with the adjoining property being a state residential in Union Township, and to the west in Anderson Township, the immediate adjacent property is zoned as an ID industrial district with a mix of AA residence district further to the west and south, with industrial areas further to the north and to the west. Some background on this particular case, the applicant through one company purchased the property in 2012 and retains the property through another company at this time in the past 10, 11 years. It appears that nine buildings have been situated in Union Township portion of the property, many of which, if not all, were acknowledged by the applicant as being intended for agricultural purposes. Example, on the information that we found, one was, one building was for cattle and hay barn structure in 2013. The applicant sought and appears to have obtained agricultural exemptions for these structures, which is an exemption at the state level, based on some Ohio revised code. Between 2018, 2020, it appears as though the Claremont County Auditor reclassified the primary uses of the property from agricultural to commercial. In August of 2022, the township planning and zoning staff received an official complaint from an adjoining property owner that there were illegal uses on the property. Zoning inspector subsequently inspected property, issued a 15-day zoning citation letter on October 12th, 2022, which I included that information in the staff materials for the board. That citation acknowledged unauthorized commercial uses and structures on the property at that time. The unauthorized uses included an auto mechanics shop, unlicensed and operable vehicles parked on the exterior of the affected building, a company called Televac Environmental with large commercial vehicles in operation, a company called Native Shield Organic Mosquito and Deer Control, and two landscaping companies called American Landscapes and Must Lawn and Landscape. The unauthorized structures noted were the structures that have been placed on the property through the agricultural exemption process rather than the conventional zoning permit process, since there were no clear agricultural uses on the property at that time. So, pretty much every building you see in Union Township is either, is either a new building, especially if it's to the southeast here, or it is remodeled building or addition space with the possible exception, I think, of this building right here, which I believe is Building D. In the past few months, township staff has worked with the owner-applicant to find ways to potentially resolve the non-compliance issues, as the applicant's statement of reasons for proposed amendment indicates, the property's use has also been called into question in active litigation, and this application for a PD seeks to dispel any confusion as to what the permitted uses of the the property are, given the unique position of line between two separate zoning districts in history. In short, the applicant has submitted the PD request to attempt to address the township's non-compliance issues as well as the aforementioned active litigation. This is looking north on that property from the oblique image. This is the property in two thousand and twelve. This is the same image, same property, two thousand and twenty-two. So you can see in this area, some of these buildings are very similar. Maybe there were some small expansions, but everything in that wooded area has been cleared up to about here, a little over halfway into the site. The twenty thirty Union Township Conference of Land Use Plan indicates the subject property is not located within a designated focus area corridor. The closest focused area is Little Miami Lower East Fork corridor, which is a natural resource corridor, which is approximately thirty hundred, thirty-four hundred feet to the north of the property. Since the property is not located within a designated corridor, there are no specific policy recommendations for the subject property. And in the absence of the future land use policies and recommendations of that area, one of those areas in which the property would be located, the mission statement and goals of the Horizon twenty-three Union Township Conference plan should be referenced and utilized, which are included on page three of the staff report. In terms of the fourth and fifth page of the staff report in these slides, purpose of the PD is outlined in section six eighty, to provide sites for business for, or mixed business residential developments at appropriate locations in relation to existing potential land uses, afford a attractive setting for developments, and to harmonize proposed developments with surrounding land uses. Section six eighty-one, if a conflict arises between PD regulations and approved PD plan, the other sections of this resolution, the PD regulations and approved plans shall prevail. Section six eighty-two, land uses shall be consistent with the use design and details contained within approved P for that property and any conditions of approval. allowable uses can include those that are within the business and industrial districts or substantially similar uses as determined by the zoning commission and board of trustees. Section six eighty-three outlines the, property owner may submit an application for zone change for PD. Section six eighty-four outlines the information that is necessary to be submitted for an application for P. Six eighty-seven is the supplemental provisions, kind of covers a variety of different things on page five of the staff report. In terms of the staff review and analysis, proposed uses that are outlined, the applicant's submittal are consistent with those permitted or conditional for the estate residential district, with the possible exception of the storage use. If the storage use would be commercial versus personal, then that would not be consistent with the state residential, that'd be more of a commercial use. Since the applicant's intent is to utilize the property a number of ways, PD plan district would allow for the enhanced design flexibility and use flexibility, allows for the establishment of transitional uses such as those described in the submittal. Although it is evident that the applicant has made substantial investment in the property since it's been required, it does not appear that the applicant is proposing at this time to make any substantive additional changes to the existing buildings, landscaping, parking, or pervious surfaces at this time, as far as what we can see from the proposed applications submittal. Effectively, what you're seeing is what you get, unless things would change as they would potentially move forward with the county and their various departments and agencies. Things currently standing proposed landscaping in Buffer Yard would not be sufficient to meet the terms set forth in Article six, Section six eighty-four, item three of the zoning resolution, particularly where there are impervious surfaces and/or building encroachments, such as building I on the south side of the property. However, it seems possible the proposed landscaping in Buffer Yard areas could be enhanced in several places on the property to assist in the transition from this property to the neighboring properties. As of staff's most recent inspection to the property, staff noted the buildings on the property were being used in a manner that's consistent with the applicant's statements, plans, and enclosures, except for building B, which is partly in Anderson Township and is occupied by a company called Televac Environmental. Building G here, seen on this slide, houses chickens. Buildings C and F house two different landscaping companies. Three buildings had personal storage, so those were buildings H, K, and L, and the others were vacant, but were noted to be intended for agricultural uses. The unconventional original manners in which the, many of the improvements in the property have occurred, some of the more recent noted uses and the intensity of the buildings and impervious surface areas are what differentiate this property from the neighboring residential properties the most, and raise compatibility issues or concerns. I did note on this particular slide, between all the different buildings, which they are labeled as they were on the site, building A no longer exists. There are sixty-seven thousand two hundred square feet of building space in Union Township, approximately. B was a little bit of an estimate. This is the proposed plan, essentially what is there, the landscaping as well. The zoning commission reviewed this case April twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three, and at that time, the zoning commission voted unanimously to deny the applicant's request to the board of trustees with respect to the rezoning of the property from a state residential plan development. You can see in their motion, the findings and facts that they came to, one being that the applicant had built multiple structures on the subject property under the auspices of agricultural use. However, in August of two thousand twenty-two, the zoning inspector checked the property, issued a fifteen-day zoning citation letter, which acknowledged unauthorized commercial uses and structure on the property at that time. Those structures were noted that had been placed on the property through agricultural exemption process rather than the conventional zoning permitting process, with no clear agricultural uses being observed at the time of the inspection. Item two in the motion for findings, subject parcel was virtually surrounded by other estate residential parcels within Union Township. The intensity of the unauthorized activity on the subject parcel has created a significant hardship for surrounding residents on this board, and the board does not believe that the rezoning partial to PD, in order to bring some of those activities and building construction into compliance, is appropriate. That is essentially the findings and the summary of the motion from the April twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three meeting. This case ultimately would have been heard at the June or the May trustee meeting, but the applicant submitted a request for the case to be deferred to June, and thus it is on our agenda tonight. In terms of the staff inspections here, I have quite a few pictures from the inspections that they, and then I'll go over the recommended modifications. Existing conditions of the site, this is looking from northwest to north, left to right, towards site A. You can see the sign for A right here. This is looking northwest towards building B. You can see the label of the building there. That's the building that's in both Anderson Township and Union Township, and that has Televac. There's a little sign for Televac in the window there. This is looking southwest, the Televac building is on the right, building B, towards buildings B, E, C, and D. D is the one here in the back. I believe this one's C. I'm not a hundred percent sure of that one, though, without looking at it again. Yes, that was building C. This is looking southwest of building C. That's where one of the landscaping companies is located. This is looking east towards building G. That is the building that has the chickens. This is looking northeast towards C on the left and G on the right. In the background, you can see a home being constructed on an adjacent parcel. This is looking northwest towards buildings D, E, B, and C. D's on your left, C's on your right. You've got B and E over here. This is looking southeast towards D, F, I, and J. D's on the left. I think that one's F. And I and J are up on top of the hill. This is looking from southeast to south towards F and I. You can see that's building F in the foreground. This is looking south, looking at building F from the rear, one of the two areas that had a little dumpster and some storage there in the back of the building, along with this storage container. This is looking south towards building I in the pond. This is looking southeast towards building J. This is looking east. J's on the right, K's in the middle, H is on the left. This is looking northeast towards H. This is looking northwest towards one of the entrances along the property line. To the right is where the house is being built, as a different piece of property. To the left is the subject property. Recommended modifications, if the board would decide to essentially override the zoning commission's recommendation, the applicant would need to address the concerns from other related agencies and departments, including the building department, which has some issues with soil and water and also building-related issues at this point for permitting. Applicant would need to provide complete zoning applications and submit suitable corresponding site plans, measurements, setbacks, et cetera, uses for all the structures on the properties, and all the buildings could become legally permitted and compliant. Each building use would need to be consistent with any zoning authorizations by the township, and this is an item that can be addressed administratively by staff. Would stipulate that no additional structures could be placed on this property without a major amendment process. No changes to the uses of the approved structures could occur without a major amendment process. The applicant should clarify the indoor storage uses on the property are intended to be for personal storage of a non-commercial nature only, unless the storage would be related to an otherwise approved use, which in this case would be potentially limited to landscaping uses, agricultural uses, nursery uses, and/or residential uses occurring on the subject property. Applicant would need to provide additional details for proposed landscaping plan, acknowledge and enhance plannings between a subject property, any parking and adjacent residential areas. Landscaping buffers should be marked as preservation areas, and any vegetation disturbed should be repaired, supplemented, or replaced. Proposed dumpster locations would need to be moved to one or more other areas of the site, less visible from the adjoining property, with adequate screening to be provided where applicable. Signage plan would need to be submitted, if applicable, and would be limited to a height of no more than five feet from finished grade. A photometric plan would need to be provided, as one has not been provided at this time. All, any non-allowing would need to be downward directed, enough sufficient intensity to eliminate without projecting onto adjoining residential property, with details and specs to be provided. Applicant would need to provide anticipated average daily traffic volumes to help make final access and parking determinations. All proposed parking loading spaces determined necessary would need to be striped and signed accordingly. Similarly, any required driveway aisles would need to be striped and/or have arrows for one-way access drives to direct traffic in a proper manner on the site. Applicant should get the northeast corner of the property survey to determine if there is in fact a driveway encroachment on the neighboring property, which does show up on the applicant's plans. And I did receive a call from the neighbor that is impacted by that, on that very issue. If the encroachment is identified, as the plans indicate, the encroachment issues would need to be addressed. The neighbor, I think the last name is Height, Hot? I'm not really sure how you pronounce that. And then number ten, as of that date, there were some other items that were minor administrative items that need to be addressed with the plan. Actions required, in accordance with Sections four eleven to four twelve and Sections six eighty to six eighty-seven of the zoning resolution, the board of trustees' role in this process is either enter a motion to recommend approval, approval with some modifications, or denial of the applicant's request to rezone the property as submitted, and/or with any further modifications as deemed appropriate. I did receive two pieces of information that I forwarded to you in the last week or so. One was from Mr. Gordon, was in a sealed envelope for all of the trustees, and the other was an email that I forwarded yesterday from Mr. David, Dave Isles, from American Landscapes. That concludes my report. Do you have any questions for me?
Mr. McCormick, good job. Very detailed, very detailed. That was a tough case. Good job. Mr. Becker, any questions for me?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, thank you for the thorough review. So I'm interested in the relationship of the buildings relative to the property line. Are they like right on the line, or what is a setback? And what is the required setback for estate residential zoning?
So, for example, on this particular slide, you can see the dotted lines here. Those are the setback lines for the estate residential area. This building here, which I believe is building I, encroaches simply because it's considered, at least at this point, more of a commercial building. All the other buildings meet the setback requirements, other than the ones that are along the east, or I'm sorry, western property line. And in those cases, those buildings, if you remember the previous older aerials, some of those buildings were already encroaching over the property and into the adjacent township and county, even in two thousand and twelve. So really, the only other building that is encroaching that is a more modern, newer building is building I.
All right, so building, so building I is the only one that has a question with the, with the setback. I guess the other ones that are adjacent to Anderson Township, I guess we don't care. It's out of jurisdiction?
Well, it's out of the jurisdiction on that site, and in the two thousand and twelve aerial, you can see that these buildings, one building has flipped an orientation, but it still was going through both townships, both jurisdictions. The, yeah, it's actually just that one other building.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Mr. Luke? Any questions for him?
No, not this one.
Good job, Mr. McCormick. Appreciate you very much. It's a lot of detail. Good job. So before I open this case up, and that's why all of you are probably here, so let's, let's do this. I want to set the bars at the table here. Whether you are for this zoning case or against this zoning case, I know there's a lot of emotion involved. We're talking about property, we're talking about your land, where you want to raise your family, things like that. I get it. Let's all be adults. Let's absolutely be respectful. I want absolutely no below-the-belt hits. You know exactly what I'm talking about. None. And let's just keep it professional. Say what you have to say. The time is yours, the floor is yours. Have as much time as you need, but let's just keep it peaceful and respectful. Okay? Okay, Union Township zoning case two dash two three dash Zulu, request for a zone map amendment from ER to PD to allow landscaping uses, agricultural uses, nursery uses, residential uses, and indoor storage uses. At this time, I'm going to open up for public comments for anyone that is a proponent of this zoning case. All right, great. I'm going to swear again.
Great. Sir, you just swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, all of the truth, so what have you got?
I do.
Great. Please hit your name and address for the record, sir.
Sure. My name is Brian O'Connor. My address is six hundred Vine Street, Cincinnati, four five two oh two.
Great.
I'm Doug's attorney. Thank you for allowing us to be here. Thank you for allowing everyone here to come and comment both for and against this, and thank you for the time that you guys have done in preparation. Staff's been great in working with us. We really appreciate you pushing this from the May to the June hearing, because we heard some things at the April hearing, and we wanted to do some research. We wanted to get some data so that we could come in here fully prepared and share it with you. First and foremost, I want to say, the recommendations that we saw on the screen, we're good with them. We'll do them. We're here to try to start a process of peace and moving forward and resolution, and those recommendations, they make sense to us. If there's other things that we hear, either through this process or that any of you gentlemen have in mind, we'll take it into consideration. We'll get it done. Mr. McCormick, I think I had emailed to you a short, ten photos or less PowerPoint.
Yep.
And then thank you for putting it up on the screen. In the staff's presentation, he was able to show the aerials from, we saw, two thousand and twelve and the present day. I've managed to pull up some additional aerials, and so the first one that we've got here is a pretty zoomed-out photo, and I've got two arrows on the screen. The yellow arrow that you see is the applicant's site, Doug's property, and the orange arrow points to the neighbor who will speak in opposition today. Part of the reason I pulled this up and showed you this is, I want you to understand, this is not, you know, pristine forest. This is not, you know, some log cabin out in the middle of nowhere. As you can see on the Hamilton County and Anderson Township side, there's a fair amount of industry, there's a fair amount of commerce going on here. Can we go to the next slide? So this one goes back to nineteen sixty-eight. I managed to find the aerial photos from nineteen sixty-eight. I'm sorry for the resolution, the spy satellites weren't as good back then, but you can see even back then, this was not just a forest. This was not just trees. This was, the Bickles owned this property, operated businesses out of it, had a bunch of buildings, had a bunch of vehicles on it. As we progress forward to nineteen ninety-four, you see the same thing. You can see, even through the fuzzy USGS resolution, that there's buildings, there's activity, there's commerce going on. I want to say the next one's maybe two thousand? Yeah, I'm sorry, that's blurry, but it's just a continuation. All of this is before Doug owned the land, before the Gordons built their house there. I want to say the next one's two thousand and seven. And this is, at the top of the screen there, you can see the neighbor starting to construct his house at that time, and on the bottom of it, you can see the site. his house at that time, and on the bottom of it, you can see the site, you can see outdoor storage, you can see, see business, and I think the description is that there's two workshops, some sheds, a corn crib, a pole barn, all of that kind of existing there. Then I think the next thing we've got, maybe if I did this right, it'll, it will progress. Maybe not. Can we try one more slide?
It's 2012.
Yeah, this is the 2012, I think that you showed in your presentation. And then, yeah, there we go. So that's, perfect. 2014, 2015, 2017, and 18 as well, just the progression here of, of buildings. And what you'll see is that when my client bought this property in 2012, the auditor valued it less than $200,000. It's now worth, you know, 10 years later, 10 times that. Mr. Evans has invested a significant amount of money into this area, and he's cleaned it up. At the time, the property was dilapidated, some of the barns, you'll hear from Reese Evans, who's here, will tell you that they were on the verge of falling over. And he's gone in and made this better. And the next slide, I think, we've got an aerial photo of what it looks like now, zoomed out, we have a drone fly over and get you a shot of what those barns look like. My recollection is that there are seven of them in Union Township, two of them in Anderson Township, and then I think two of them are dissected by the county border. It's a bit of a strange thing, when the county line runs through a building. I've talked to the Anderson Township people myself and say, hey, what do you do? Have you ever had this happen before? And they say, well, we look at where the majority of the square footage is, and I'm told that on that building, Building B, that it's roughly 60% in Hamilton County and Anderson Township, which is, as the staff noted, a zone and an industrial district. So it's, it's outside of this jurisdiction, but it's, from our view, permissible there. And then the last photo, before we just get to talking a little bit, is, again, I pulled those photos up as contrast of 2012, when, before Mr. Evans bought the property, versus what it looks like now. 200,000, less than $200,000 versus now, 1.5 million dollars or something like that is the auditor's value. I heard the staff report saying, kind of, you know, what you see is what you get. That's absolutely right. And I want to be clear about what we're not asking you for permission to do. We're not asking you for permission to build any new buildings. We're not asking you to approve any new or different businesses in here, to say that somebody else can come in and affect these neighbors' lives. We're also not asking you to do anything that would impact, and I know there's a lawsuit going on. Mr. Gordon will still have his day in court. There's four judges presiding over that case, and that will still progress regardless of what happens in this room today. So I mentioned that we were so appreciative of the opportunity to push this into June instead of May, so that we could do a little bit more research and data gathering from what we heard at the April hearing. We heard some testimony then about things like property values, lights, drainage, and traffic. And so between now and then, we've gone out and we've hired professionals to try to understand, tried to figure out if we had an issue, and if we did have an issue, what we could do to make it better. The first thing that I've got, and I think I printed out four copies of each of these, may I approach?
Please. Thank you.
So we had an appraiser take a look at the property, and we had heard some testimony at the April hearing that some neighbors were concerned that they had lost 30, 50, 100% of their property value. And we asked an appraiser to come in and to look at it and to see if there was any truth to that. Is there anything that we should be worried about, and if so, how can we make it better? And the appraiser went in and said, over the last three years, this site has experienced property value increases between 11 and, I believe, 30%. I gave you all four of my copies, I don't have it in front of me, but that's what I saw there. And so, you know, that, to me, confirms what I've heard from Doug investing in this property, in making it better, cleaning it up, making this a better area for the community. With regard to property values, I just, I do have to speak a little bit about what we heard from some of the neighbors at the April hearing. You heard Mr. Gordon, the neighbor, in the orange arrow that I showed you at the beginning of this, say that he was concerned that he had lost 30, 50, 100% of his property value. I think there's at least three reasons that you might question that. First, in the separate lawsuit that we've got going on, he testified to the court under oath, he said his property was entirely worthless. But at the same time, he was refinancing his property, going to his bank and saying that it was worth more than the appraised value so that he could get a loan. So, on one hand, he's coming in here saying this property value has diminished. On the other hand, he's going out and getting financing and saying that the property value's gone up. So it's something to keep in mind there. Second, you've heard the neighbor say that his property value has gone down, but keep in mind that while this development was going on, he gave some of his land to his brother to move from Mount Lookout into this area. And so if, if you really had thought that you had lost 30, 50, 100% of your property value, would you give some of your acreage to your brother so that he could invest hundreds of thousands of dollars to move in next door? Keep that in mind. And then last, with regard to property value, we, I mentioned that we've always been thinking about what can we do to make this better? Is there anything we can do to fix this? If there really was a loss of property value here, the applicant, Doug, has gone to the neighbor and said, look, I will pay you twice the appraised value of your property. And that deal hasn't gone forward. I don't fault him for that. I respect a property owner's rights. I don't begrudge him one bit, but I can tell you that if I had lost what I thought was 30, 50, 100% of my land, and somebody came in and offered to pay me double as a way to make it right, I'd be jumping on that. The only other, at the April hearing, we heard another neighbor come in and say that he had shown an appraisal and said that he had thought he had lost some property value as well. I just want to point out that he had, at the same time, had been applying to reduce his tax burden, and so it doesn't completely surprise me that someone would come in when they're trying to reduce their taxes and say that their property value had gone down. That's something that we're relatively used to. I mentioned that we heard stuff about lighting. We had Queen City Electric take a look and said, is there anything we need to do here? Is there a lighting problem? And if so, how do we fix it? What they told us was, these barns have 35-watt LED bulbs on them, and that those bulbs are the same 35-watt LED bulbs that you see on any agricultural building throughout the country. They said that there is, they are all pointed downward, that there is no upward trajectory to it, and that there's no light pollution, and so they told us, we don't see anything that you need to do here. But as I mentioned at the start of this, we're, we're good with the recommendations, the recommended modifications. We hear the staff, and if, you know, there's a more thorough lighting analysis that we need to do, we'll do it. We heard about drainage, so we went out and hired an engineer. The engineer took a look at it and said that the general flow of stormwater and discharge points have not been altered since 2012. They say that our existing pond is bigger than what's required for this property, and that the neighbors, the Gordons' property, lies outside of the watershed, so the development could have no impact on the neighbor's property. So again, we went to professionals, hired them, and said, if there's something we need to do, please let us know. What we're hearing right now is, there isn't anything, but we're trying to be good neighbors. If there's something to be done with regard to drainage that somebody can point out to us, we'll do it. And then lastly, at the April hearing, we heard about traffic. I know that the neighbors have kids. I get it. Traffic is a concern that all of us experience. You know, we all are concerned for our family's safety, and so we had a traffic study done. And on the days that they were out doing counts, they counted roughly one vehicle every 10 minutes incoming, and roughly one vehicle every 11 minutes outgoing. So five or six vehicles an hour going in, and then five or six vehicles an hour going out. That is not I-75. So why, in my mind, is approving this, this request the right option here? My client's investment in this area, this tenfold increase in the property value over a decade, certainly generates a lot of tax revenue for the community and the school district, but I'm not asking you to approve this request because of the tax revenue. We've brought water lines into the property. With the water comes fire hydrants. We've made the area safer. To me, one of the most important things is that these barns allow two local landscaping businesses to have a place to operate from and to store their equipment. These are young guys who started their outfits when they're in high school. I think Griffin Must might be here, maybe. Is Griffin here? He wasn't able to make it. I know Dave Isles with American Landscape had a conflict today, and I think he emailed you separately about it. But they're good small businesses, they keep people employed, they're going in and keeping their lawn mowers and picking them up in the morning, going out and dropping them off at night. They keep our neighborhood clean, they make our community better. Read their Google reviews and see how many people in this part of town benefit from these businesses being able to operate. Again, we're not asking to build more buildings. You know, it sticks out to me that Doug's got three kids, he's got two boys. Lang lives at the top of the hill above these barns. Reese, we saw the picture, is building a ranch house at the bottom. That's what the, when you saw some construction. You know, so two of three, two of Doug's three kids want to live here. If you want a property to be well taken care of, have a landowner who's got family living on it, and that, to me, is the best incentive to make sure things are taken care of. Doug will tell you that two different Chinese outfits have offered to buy this land from him, and he's refused. He's didn't take that big check. He's putting more money into Union Township, he's having his kids live in Union Township. It's, it's a good thing for the community. Imagine if Doug had thrown in the towel, said he didn't want to deal with this mess anymore, and sold the land to a Chinese investment firm. Or imagine that Doug had decided to use the Hamilton County portion of this project for more industrial things. Wouldn't be good for anybody, wouldn't be good for the neighborhood. Or imagine that the neighbors get their way, and that some or all of these barns are torn down for nothing. With that will come a reappraisal, and tax dollars will be lost. Fortunately, nothing, none of that, I hope, will happen. We're committed, Doug's committed, to keeping this area better, to trying to be a good neighbor, to investing money in Union Township, and to having this a place where his two boys can hopefully raise their future families. I've gone way too long here. We appreciate your time. If you have any questions, I or someone else here will be happy to answer them.
Mr. Becker, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'm trying to connect the dots on some of these property transfers, what was transferred when? You, you mentioned Mr. Gordon's brother, or property was transferred to him. What year was that?
I believe it was, the building was, started to be constructed in 2019, so I want to say that the transfer from Jason and his father to his brother was, I would put it around 2017, 2018 was the deed transfer. I'm sure they can answer that as well.
Okay. So I guess what I'm trying to understand is, is, you know, is a consideration for me is, you know, who moved in after all these buildings were in place versus who were there, who was there before the buildings were in place? Is it just that one property, or is there more?
So it's a totally fair question. What we saw from the progression of the aerials was that before Doug had bought this property, there was already a pole barn, there were sheds, there was a corn crib, there were a bunch of buildings and outdoor storage and things like that. That 2007 aerial photo I showed you, you could see Jason Gordon's property being built to the top of it, and you could see at the bottom what the Bickles were currently operating there. So it wasn't like when Jason decided to build his log cabin, that nothing was in his backyard. After that time, at 10 years after Jason Gordon and his wife had been there, he decided to give some of his land to his brother so that his brother could move in just north, just north of the, of Doug's property. And so, you know, his brother certainly came with eyes wide open.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Mr. Logan? No, none this time.
Okay. The only other thing that strikes me, Mr. Becker, you had asked a question to the staff. You mentioned the setback with Building I.
Yeah.
And I, and I heard the staff say that it would be a setback problem if that was a commercially-used building. We will be committed to using that for agricultural purposes only, so that there isn't a setback problem, so that we don't have to tear down a building unnecessarily.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good presentation. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak as a proponent of this case? Yeah, please come on up, sir. All right, we go and swear again? Sir, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so how you got?
I do.
Great. Please hit your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Reese Evans, Doug's son. My current address is 8121 Bravo Road. It's only about a mile and a half from here, and I'm currently the one that's building the house. As you can see, the dirt right there, that's where we're building. First of all, I want to say thank you to all you guys for being here tonight and having us. I am building a house and starting, like, my life over here with my girlfriend and my father, and I couldn't be more excited about that. We already spend a ton of our free time over there, walking the hill with my dog and my brother's dogs. We did tear down a barn that was on that picture here, and we got timbers out of it, which will, I will be placing in the new house, so bringing some of the old into the new. We do a lot of work on the land. My brother and I just put up a fence for his sheep that he has to run more of it. There's a barn with the chickens. We frequently clean it out and make it more comfortable, comfortable for the chickens to live. And we also do, we also have a bunch of fun over there by fishing, hunting, riding our side-by-sides, and working on the land. So, thank you, guys.
Give me one second. Mr. Becker, do you have any questions at all?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Logan? Good, thank you. I do have one question for you.
Yep.
Mr. Evans, is, so I'm very familiar with the property. I've been out there twice.
Yeah.
To visit it. And you have the easement that goes in between, I'm going to say Gordon Jr. and Gordon Senior, right, or his brother, right? You know the gravel easement?
Yeah.
And then your father built the asphalt driveway that goes completely around the Gordon's property, right?
He does.
Okay. So personally, what, what access to use to get out of there, your property, and the gravel easement that you do have legal right to right now, or your paved driveway that your father put in?
Well, I would say about 100% of the time, I use the paved driveway that my dad put in.
Okay.
But however, last Sunday, I was over there, and I was parked in between the driveways up on our piece of property.
Sure.
And I was not going to get out the gravelway, but even if I wanted to, I couldn't because he was on his lawnmower blocking the driveway out.
Okay. Fair enough, yeah. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak as a proponent, in favor of this case? Yeah? Oh, okay, go ahead, sir. Yes, come on up. Great. Want to swear again?
I'm Mark Edenville. I live 4304 West Newmarket Road, Hillsboro Hall.
Great. Oh, perfect, perfect. Thank you. And, sir, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so how you got?
Yes, sir.
Great. Please, go ahead.
I technically don't have no pros or cons for this case, other than I heard about what was going on, and I wanted to thank Union Township. I do a lot of work in this area, probably 30% of my company's work's down here. And I want to thank the county or township for looking forward, providing work, plus providing new jobs for people, you know, going back to the... You know, going back to the property we're talking about, when I see them, I think how nice that is. Out our area, that hardly not happening anymore. Nobody has the opportunity to get started. It's hard for them. I look down my backyard and I got 3,000 acres of solar panels that used to be all farm ground. And that's one of the reasons why I'm here because the township and the people, I know, don't agree on a lot of things. But when you can put something together that brings new life in your community rather than watching it die, because all I see now is weeds growing up around total panels and it's gone. And it's more of a sentimental thing here. I just thought I'd take the time to come down here. I apologize for being dirty, but we just got done pouring a bridge foundation before I got here. And I'd like to just thank you guys because the thought going forward, for the future, is what we're all about.
What's that?
I mean, I've got kids and grandkids and I'd love to have them look at that every day versus what I have to look at now.
What's that?
And I'm not against the solar panels either. Maybe that's what we need. The people that sold the ground to them, that was their choice. It was their ground. So, you know, I just want to have respect for what person's decision is on their own properties. Other than that, that's all I've got to say. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Enjoy listening to your meetings so far.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak as a proponent for this case? Yeah, come on up. Go and swear you in, sir. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
Great, please state your name and address for the record.
Doug Evans, Newtown, Ohio. I want to really thank you guys. I've never seen three trustees that would come out more than, maybe even more than once and talk to both parties to get involved in something like this. You know, that was a nice thing. You guys probably didn't have to do that. But they ask questions and try to do that. I think it's very commendable. And I just want to tell you that. And I think, you know, I think back, my good old buddy, Art Weedabine, talking about Union Township back a long time ago. You know, hey, he said everyone wants to move the Union Township and close the door and don't have any more neighbors. You know, and I appreciate that now that I'm kind of down here, you know, because that's kind of what it is. And, you know, the first three things or on the thing at Children's Hospital, you know, I think it's a great thing. We have a lot of property in Union Township, about 400, 500 acres, not even on one spot, but different ones. And to see that, when I was five years old, I went to Children's Hospital. So, I think it's good that Children's Hospitals come here. And I think it's good for the whole community, you know. And just like Mark Edenfield said, you know, looking, he works his two kids. He's done a lot of work back there. I think he even did one of Gordon's houses. You know, he got all the gravel and stuff from us to try to help everybody, you know, to work together and stuff. You know, I have three kids. I think two of them are here. My daughter's here. And hopefully she'll build a house up there sometime, too. You know, because it's really nice to, you know, see the bald eagles, see the turkeys, you know. That one building, building I up there on the right, we do have domesticated turkeys in there. Everybody said, why are you putting turkeys? I mean, you've got so many wild ones. But that's where the turk, that's the building that we have turkeys in.
Building I?
Building, yeah, it's up there on the, all the way on top of the right. So, you know, just thinking back, I went to school with people named Bickle. I got to know Roseanne Bickle and her mother and her father. Her brother was a guy named C.B., Charlie Bickle. And they own about all the property through here, their cousins and whatever else. And even with the, those were all their shops and everything there. The three out of the four buildings down there were existing. They farmed all the ground there and they're the ones that sold the ground. Those buildings have always been there. You know, I didn't, you know, just that one is the one that got built on the same property line as the other ones. But back to the Bickles, they're really nice people. And believe it or not, where the house was, they all went to school at Turpin, even though their house was in Union Township. So, there's always been a couple little, maybe mistakes. You know, I think one of the neighbors had an issue that way, too, based on the property lines and things. But when Mrs. Bickle came to me and said, you know, would you like to buy this place? You know, I said I would, you know, and that's what I did. And, you know, Jamie Fox Landscaping was there for seven to 10 years. Mr. Bickle had his, I think it was his relative or his brother named Mort Bickle used to run a service station business, that fixed service station stuff where that van is and that, oh, the building on the right, you know, where that loading dock and stuff was. He was there for 20 or 30 years before, you know. He was probably a little bit in Claremont County and a little bit in Hamblin County. But, you know, the main thing that really made me like this property was the hillsides and having my kids over there helping do a lot of the work. You know, like Brian said, my one son lives up the top. My other son's building a house there. And I think it's a great thing to live close to work and live where you want to keep improving. So, you know, like, we bought the top house to run water down. We didn't just run the four inch, we ran the eight inch. And we did the Claremont County specifications and we got the permits and everything for that. And there was no government money spent on that. It was all our money, okay? But I'm willing to make water available to my neighbors at whatever cost it would be. But, you know, we got new electric through there. The old electric came down from the top of the hill and it was always falling down and this and that. And I paid for the whole thing. I didn't ask government grant or government whatever. We paid for the whole thing. So, you know, we're just trying to, you know, help the people here. And, you know, the two small guys, the young ones, Griffin's 21 years old. His mom and dad live on, just on top of the hill that joins the property here. So, you know, he can almost walk to work and do stuff. And Dave Isles, he's another landscaper. He lives in Claremont County. He's been there 10 years, you know, and he's just a great tenant and stuff. So, you know, just trying to help these people, you know. I want to find a middle ground. You know, I want to compromise. You know, I'm 60 years old. I don't want to fight with my neighbors. I don't want my kids fighting with the neighbors. I like to get something resolved and something worked out. You know, if it's a matter of putting more trees in or doing something, I've left as many trees I could on the left-hand side and, you know, tried to do what we can. We hired Mark Walker to do a whole bunch of different studies about the water and all sorts of stuff like that. But, you know, really, at the end of the day, I just want to be able to live there, use the buildings, keep the two landscapers and have everybody happy. So, I appreciate you guys helping me up here.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Becker, do you have any questions?
Actually, just a comment. I just want to thank you for the tour you gave me. I really appreciate that, seeing the property from your perspective. Also, Mr. Gordon was just as gracious, you know, giving me a tour of the surrounding properties and seeing it. I did want to clarify for the record that, yes, the three of us were there, but none of us were there at the same time. That's an important distinction. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Loeb, do you have any questions?
Thanks for clarifying that. It's always a good lens there. No, not at this time.
Yeah, likewise, I visited with the Gordons, visited with you. Gave me a great perspective of your thoughts on your property and I appreciate you giving me the tour. Yeah, absolutely, Mr. Evans. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak? Yeah, ladies, come on up, please. Oh, okay. No, you're okay. You're okay. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak as a proponent that is for this case? Okay, seeing none, we'll go and move on to opponents. If there's anyone that is opponent that is against this zoning case, come on forward. Yeah, please, come on. Okay, I will go and swear you in, sir. Can you please raise your right hand? Yeah, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Great, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Board. My name is Jeff Forbes. I'm with the law firm of Wood and Lamping, also at 600 Vine Street, but on the 25th floor, Cincinnati, Ohio 45202. I'm here on behalf of Jason Gordon and a number of his family members.
Yeah, it's fine, it's fine. Yeah.
All right. Thank you again, Board. Thank you very much for the opportunity tonight. I understand that the Board has been provided with a copy of this. I already used my joke at Zoning Commission that we were going to go through it page by page. So, I won't do that tonight. But I will repeat some of what I did say at Zoning Commission about that reference binder and those exhibits. We're not going to go through it. You've had the opportunity to see it. But I will, in summary, tell you what it really does is it tells the story of really 10 years of ongoing illegal activity on the property. It details a pending private lawsuit between the parties where a judge has already determined that the uses on that property are illegal, ordered the uses to stop. But really, bottom line, it tells the story of a decades-long pattern of ignoring the zoning regulations and any other applicable rules related to that property. This Board now, tonight, with this application, you have the opportunity to remedy that problem. I had some things I was going to say. I'm going to try to keep it really brief. Because there's a lot to say about this. But there were a few things I just want to address about the earlier presentation. You heard a lot tonight that they said, they've brought in experts. They'll do whatever they have to do to make this right. Our question is, why didn't they do what they were supposed to do 10, 11 years ago when they started building all of these buildings under the idea that they were going to be agricultural uses and then never using them for agricultural use? You've heard about chickens and sheep and domesticated turkeys. There was not one chicken on this property until your zoning inspector went out there and told them that those were commercial uses and they were not permitted. There was no talk of sheep until the zoning commission, when they realized that there's no agricultural use going on on that property. And so, that's what brings us to this application. Essentially, what you have is an applicant who has said, "I can't make my property conform to your zoning code." So, what I'm asking you is to make your zoning regulations conform to my existing property. That's what this application is. And that brings us to the application that's before you. Like they said, in April, we appeared at the zoning commission. The zoning commission had a very thorough hearing. They heard from a lot of people, both for it and against it, probably more people than even appeared here tonight. And at the conclusion of that, after a lot of discussion, your zoning commission, all five of them unanimously recommended denial of this application. And we would ask that you accept that recommendation. And so, because that was such a strong unanimous decision, I think it's worth taking a look at some of the stuff that happened at that zoning commission. One of them was, there's quite a bit of discussion with applicant's counsel at the time about what was going on on the property. One of the zoning commission members asked, you know, about, you submitted this statement for proposed building uses. They questioned why there was an application. These earlier applications for agricultural exemptions when landscaping businesses were what were currently on the property. And the council stated that, you know, at the time, they had an understanding that landscaping businesses fell within the agricultural exemption. Although they did concede at the zoning commission, they understand now it does not. We questioned whether anyone, all those years ago, could have thought that a landscaping business would qualify as an exempt agricultural use on the property. The law in Ohio is very clear that landscaping businesses do not qualify as agricultural uses. The applicant, I think I mentioned this below at zoning commission, the applicant runs landscaping businesses. None of them are exempt as agricultural uses on any of the other locations. But for some reason, these two landscaping businesses, they thought might qualify for agricultural use. But they conceded that they don't. They also asked, again, at zoning commission, they asked, you know, there was, and I'm going to apologize, I can't keep track of which building is which, A, B, C. But we do know, I think everyone has known that at least one of those buildings, there was a mechanic in there. And they asked him about that. And they said, well, you know, how long had the mechanic shop been in there before the township zoning administrator, you know, issued the notice or came out for the inspection? And there had been a mechanic there for, I think they said, five or six years. And it was only after they got the notice from the township that the mechanic left and they put some chickens in that building. So, the chickens have only been there since this zoning issue has come up. So, in the 10 years or almost 11 years that these buildings have been there, there hasn't, there has not been agricultural use. And, you know, finally, what I'm going to say about the zoning commission and staff, you heard it in part of your staff report tonight, but I think it bears repeating because it's important what that zoning commission found. Once they heard from everybody, they said, "We've got a problem here. This is a tough one." That's, you know, that's what the zoning commission started with. That's, you know, that's what the zoning commission started with. "This is a tough one. What do we do?" But they said, "There's a dilemma here of whether or not the guidelines of a PD could even be adhered to if we did grant it." They noted that what was previously approved by prior administration was misrepresented, therefore denying consideration of what should have been a case for the zoning commission. So they acknowledged that this idea that these buildings went up under an agricultural exemption, that was a misrepresentation, but that was a prior administration. There's nothing we can do about it. They're there, but now is the time that we may be able to rectify that. They also said that, based on everything they heard, there was a significant hardship to the surrounding residential area. And the motion that they made, I think, is really important. That's why I just, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page here. That motion said that the zoning commission finds that the submitted PD application zone change request is not consistent with the Horizon 2030 Comprehensive Land Use Plan. It does not meet all of the planned development application requirements of a PD district plan, and therefore they recommend that the submission be denied, and they adopted two findings of fact that I'm going to read to you again, even though you've heard them once tonight. One, the applicant has built multiple structures on the subject property under the auspice of agricultural use. However, in August of twenty-two, of 2022, the township zoning inspector checked the property and issued a fifteen-day zoning citation letter on October 12th, 2022, which acknowledged unauthorized commercial uses in structures on the property at that time. The unauthorized structures noted were the structures that had been placed on the property through the agricultural exemption process rather than the conventional zoning permitting process. No clear agricultural uses were observed on the site at the time of the inspection. And the second finding of fact was that the subject parcel is virtually surrounded by other estate residential parcels within Union Township. The intensity of unauthorized activity on the subject parcel has created a significant hardship for surrounding residents, and this Board does not believe that rezoning the parcel to a planned development in order to bring some of those activities and building construction into compliance is appropriate. Those were their findings of fact, based on what they heard, and they unanimously voted to recommend denial. And so the applicant has had an opportunity to put on their presentation tonight, and what I would say is, really, in order for this Board to reverse the decision or the recommendation of the zoning commission, you would need to, you'd need to be able to say that tonight, we heard evidence that the PD guidelines could be adhered to, that the applicant did not misrepresent the facts allowing for the previous development, that the plan is consistent with the Horizon 2030 Comprehensive Plan, that the plan meets the PD application requirements, that there is no significant hardship to the surrounding residential area. You'd have to say that we heard enough tonight to determine that landscaping businesses, which is what they really want to keep there after the rezoning, are not commercial uses, which would contradict the law of Ohio and actually the applicant's own admission at zoning commission. And then you'd have to find both of the findings of fact that the zoning commission found were incorrect. And what I'm here to say, I didn't hear anything in the presentations that you've heard tonight that would contradict anything that was presented at zoning commission or give you any reason to reverse the recommendation from zoning commission. Just want to make sure I'm getting all my notes here. You heard from the applicant, actually, that he said, "Boy, this children's hospital thing is great, and it's all part of some really great development in Union Township." I think it is, too. My wife is a nurse at Children's Hospital, and I think it's great. But that case is really the perfect example of how a zoning case is supposed to proceed. This case is completely backwards. What you saw, and what you see normally, because, you know, you see a lot of zoning cases that come before you, and what you see normally, what you saw with the children's hospital, is that a property owner has an idea of how to develop their property. So what do they do? They prepare a plan. They work with staff. They say, "Hey, what do you think about our plan? Does this meet this provision of your code? Does this meet this provision of your code? Looks like you might be best suited for a planned development." Okay, so they make their plan like a planned development. They go through the process. They go to zoning commission. They come to this Board. They get approval. Once they get approval, then they come up with what their final development plan is going to be, and once that's approved, they go get all the proper permits, they work with the county water, they work with the fire department, all the normal things that this Board sees and the conditions that you typically put on approvals. You know, you've got to work with all the appropriate agencies. Once they get all of those permits, they build what's on the plan. And you can almost go exactly in reverse for this particular case. In this case, the owner of the property made some questionable statements about building hay and cattle barns, which, by the way, I don't think in ten or eleven years there was ever, they never talked about a bale of hay or a head of cattle being there. But they made those statements so they could get an agricultural exemption to bypass the permitting process. They constructed what is essentially a business park in the middle of a residentially zoned property. Some of those businesses aren't there anymore, but over the years, there have been a number, it's been almost nothing but businesses there, including the existing landscaping businesses. And only once a court and the township sent the notices and a court had a finding that said, "No, no, 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 this stuff is not appropriate in estate residential," then they submitted for a rezoning, completely backwards. And now, what they're essentially saying is, "Look at all the work we've put in here. Don't make us undo that." We're not asking you to make them undo anything. What we're asking, what the Gordons are asking, is simple. Deny this request for rezoning. What happens after that will likely be resolved in the pending litigation. It may be resolved at an administrative level. That's not what we're here about today. All we're saying is, they've asked for it to rezone the property. We're asking you to accept the recommendation of the zoning commission and reject that application, deny it. So Mr. Gordon is here, his family's here. I'm sure they're going to want to speak to you tonight, so I'm going to leave a lot of that to them. But I'll just leave you with this, sort of in closing. That big binder that we gave you, on page one of that binder, it basically has two questions. One is, "Does Union Township expect its citizens to follow the zoning regulations?" We hope the answer is yes. The second question says, "And when a citizen willfully violates those regulations, does the township have the will to enforce the rules?" And you've started that process to enforce the rules. We're asking you, don't approve a rezoning to change the rulebook. Instead, make a property owner comply with the rules that have been there on their property all along. The rules have always been clear. We're asking you simply, don't reward the behavior by changing the rules after the fact. So based on your own zoning resolution and the unanimous recommendation of the zoning commission, we would respectfully request that this body deny the application tonight.
Thank you.
And again, I can try to answer any questions, and again, the Gordons are here, and I'm sure they'll have more to add.
Speaker, do you have any questions?
Yeah. So this might be kind of a long question. If I need to repeat it in portions or even break it into about four different questions, you know, I can work with you on that. So I presume you're familiar with the ORC 51921 having to do with zoning of large properties, five acres and greater?
Yes.
And the definition of agriculture is defined by 51901. So my question is, considering the current use of the property and considering, again, 51901 and 51921, and with the exception of the landscaping business, what else is nonconforming? Or what issues do you have with it?
Well, even as your staff report put, you know, some of the buildings are, we believe at least, are being used for, it's not our property, so we haven't been on it. We can't tell you exactly what's happening in those properties, but, you know, some of it's being used for storage. As your staff report said, it can't be used for commercial storage. It does say it could be used for residential storage. Even that, I would question, and here's why. Storage, residential storage is typically an accessory use to residential, to a residential use, but there is no residential use on the property. So I don't know that residential storage would be appropriate. And so to that end, you know, again, I can't speak to each individual building about what's currently happening. I think what's happening in some of these buildings is even different than what was presented at the April zoning commission here. But what we can say is that over the ten or eleven years that those buildings have been being used, until there was an enforcement action, there was no agricultural use of those properties. There may be some now, but we would, our point is, you can't let a mechanic be there for six years and then kick him out and throw a couple chickens in and say, "These eleven acres are now being used for agricultural purposes." For years, they enjoyed an agricultural tax exemption, CAUV, on the property, until the county realized, "There's no agricultural use there," so they revoked their agricultural exemption. That's already happened. I guess, as long as you were, I know you've said you have four-point question there. So I'll just say one other thing. I know your staff report said that the uses that they've said are there are consistent with the permitted and conditional uses that are already permitted or conditionally permitted in residential estate or state residential district. One, we disagree with that, with that statement, but more importantly, if what's going on there is already a permitted use or a conditionally permitted use in the existing zoning, you don't need to rezone it. If there's actually permitted uses under the estate residential going on there, they can keep going on there. Now, of course, they'd have to comply with all the setbacks, all the fire codes, all the building codes, all the other codes, which they haven't. But just from a strictly zoning use standpoint, if there's something there that's a permitted use under a state residential, fine. I don't know what it would be. If there's something there that is applicable and they could apply for a conditional use permit under the existing zoning, they can do that. You don't need to rezone this property. If the staff report is correct that much of the uses there are already permitted or conditional use permitted, let them do that. If you rezone the property, then everything that's there is going to be able to stay. And we don't believe that's correct. So I apologize. You have more questions?
I do a follow-up, Chairman. So I guess the one building in question in terms of setbacks is building I. We have sworn testimony that the, that particular building is being used for domesticated turkeys, which would, you know, fit in with the definition of agriculture and seems to me fall under 51921 as well, if something, at least that portion of the property or that particular building. So would you agree with that assessment, or do you think I'm wrong?
I would say, if a building qualifies as an agricultural use and it meets, actually, if it is agricultural use, we wouldn't even be looking at setbacks, but if it's a valid agricultural use, it can stay. It doesn't need to be rezoned. Again, that's another reason to deny the rezoning. If it is a valid agricultural use, there's nothing we can do about it because of the state law.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
But that's no reason to rezone the property.
Thank you. Mr. Luke?
No, I have no questions. Thank you. When you were talking, I should have thought of these questions when the Evans side was up here, so I apologize, and I'm going to give them a chance to rebuttal afterwards, and I'll ask these questions as well. But Mr. Evans mentioned that Jamie Foxx Landscaping was in there. Was that, was that business there prior to Mr. Evans owning that property or no?
I can't, I don't know the answer to that. The Gordons may be.
Okay, no problem. So whoever comes, I want to know the answer to that question.
Yeah, I don't know the answer.
Just for you. So for our, for our team, to kind of give them, I guess, kudos, would you agree that Scott Burkey, our zoning inspector, he came out and basically said, "Wait, no go on the BMW or auto body shop that was there," and that Evans did comply? And they kicked him out and put chickens in there? Is that what you're hearing?
That's my understanding, yeah.
Okay, okay. And I was kind of baffled when you said this one statement. You're saying you don't think he should be allowed to use residential storage? Is that what I heard you say?
Well, what I'm saying is, the staff report says that the buildings, that it could be used for storage, but only residential storage, not commercial storage?
Did I hear you say that you don't think that's okay? Is that correct?
You did. I did say that.
Okay.
Because my general understanding is that residential storage would be like an accessory building to a primary residential use, and there is no residential use on that property.
I got to tell you personally, I can't speak for them, I'm not taking that into factor at all.
That's fine.
I think that's completely ridiculous. I can give a personal example. I've got, a friend of mine has got a couple of his property, and there's nothing there but a barn, and he stores a boat there, and that's personal use, and I don't, I can't.
And if this is used for, if this is used for residential storage?
Okay.
And the staff and the administration determines that that's appropriate under the code, again, there's not much we can do about that. I can tell you, representing the Gordons, they're, one of their primary concerns is the volume of traffic that's associated, that has been associated over the years with the businesses that are there. And if, if what we find out is all the businesses are going to go and that these are going to be residential storage for, you know, I presume for the, for the family, then there's going to be somebody who comes over once in a while to get a boat or to get whatever residential storage they're using there. And that may, I can't, I'm not going to speak for the Gordons to that point, but like I said, their primary issue is, over the ten-plus years, that, by the way, that they have been notifying the township of the various activities going on out here, that's been their primary concern. The, one of, even in the staff report, one of the photos that they show, and I'm not going to ask you to go back to it, but it's, it's basically down like a corridor, and there are buildings on both sides, and there are probably a dozen cars almost in that picture. So, so to say that this is, you know, that the traffic counts are, you know, or whatever, we didn't, we haven't done the traffic count. We don't think you would need to do a traffic count on property that's zoned for residential use.
Makes sense.
So, and again, the Gordons will be able to speak to it because they're there on a daily basis.
Fair enough, okay. Chairman, anything further?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just, I'm looking, I'm looking it up now, but when I was doing case law research on this, I thought I found somewhere, and I'm thinking it's in a case called Township of Brimfield versus Fiorodo, out of the 11th District in 2014, that personal storage wasn't permitted use. I'm not certain of that, but clearly, commercial storage is not.
I'm not even.
I'm not going to argue that point.
I'm not going to argue on personal storage. That's, I can't even, yeah, but yeah, that's, that's, yeah. But well done. Good job on your homework, Mr. Becker.
I thought he was going to ask me what that case held, and I.
Oh, you really did your research there.
I spent more time on this case than probably all the others combined.
Likewise, likewise, yeah. Do you think you can follow up with him?
Well, I think from what Trustee Becker and yourself just said there, the thing that alarms me is the potentiality of a dangerous precedent being set of controlling what people can do with their own property when it comes to what you're giving example of, someone that's got a barn storing a boat in it. It just feels like, I don't even want to get close to that as a limited home rule township government reaching, I mean, a couple of years back, I made the point on allowing residents to be able to have kiddie pools in their backyard and not be overly regulated where they had to show up and get a permit or fence permit to be able to do that. So I just hear the sentiment of what you're sharing there with the storage space, so it sounds like probably all three of us are in agreement with that, that it sounds like a dangerous precedent to not get engaged with. And then I heard you reference that, this was really clarifying. You said the number one primary concern is traffic.
Well, I said that was one of their primary concerns. And they'll be able to speak to that more.
I heard number, number one primary concern is traffic, and that typically you would not see or have a traffic study, and I see that as in response to the testimony for, I kind of went through and made checklist here of property values, lights, traffic, to address stuff from the prior zoning commission. So it does sound like a traffic study, and your words there is above and beyond to at least have the study done.
Well, certainly, if it's going to be used as residential, I wouldn't need a traffic study.
Okay.
I wouldn't.
Then I, I'll probably reserve this for later, but I just, I have, I heard the phrase of "ten years of nefarious activities," and it just gives me a little pause for when things are made aware to this Board and when this Board has, has the authority to act. And Trustee Dilz, you just shared that the zoning inspector was able to, to go out there and bring the property into compliance, at least with some of the business activities that was occurring. And again, that's just something that we often see sitting here, that we don't have almighty powers that go broad and beyond. You know, in this case, it's a PD that's being presented, so.
Well, actually, we're not asking you to go anywhere beyond your own zoning regulations, and what we're saying is, the property is zoned estate residential. It has been for, you know, for the ten or eleven years that we've been talking about this. So we're not asking you to do anything beyond the scope of, of what you would do in a rezoning application. What we're saying is, given, and actually, I think it was from the staff report that said, and I can't remember the exact wording, but given the, sort of the convoluted manner or something to that effect in which this property has been developed over the last years, it's complicated. And what we're saying is, it's really not that complicated. It's zoned estate residential. The state residential says what you're allowed to do in it. A court has already, in addition to your own zoning inspector, has found that many of the uses on there don't comply with the state residential, and maybe they did kick somebody out of one building and put some chickens in it. They're here tonight saying, "But we want to keep the landscaping businesses," and that clearly is not permitted in estate residential. And rather than kick out the landscapers and put in some more chickens, they said, "We'd like to rezone the property." What we would like to do is create essentially an island of potential business uses in a sea of residential, and we don't think that's an appropriate reason to rezone property. That's all. We're just asking you to deny the rezoning and essentially allow the pending civil litigation to play out, and that may determine what does or does not happen on this property anyway.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you very much. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Forbes.
No, thank you very much. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Forbes.
I did want to point out, Mr. Chairman, that the the case regarding the landscaping, that was, if I'm pronouncing this correctly, Petiti versus Plain Township or zoning appeals. And that was in the Fifth District in two thousand three. They ruled landscaping was not a permitted agricultural use under five nineteen twenty one. Which is why they're asking for the PD.
Got it. Yeah, got it, got it. Okay, is there any else I'd like to speak as an opponent against this? Yeah, please, come on up.
Good evening.
Can we go swear again?
Yep.
Sir, do you swear the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, shall be God?
I do.
Great. Please state your name and address for the record.
John Gratch. I'm right behind Building I, forty three oh four Mount Carmel Road. First off, I'd like to thank yous all for seeing this, seeing me this evening, hearing my concerns.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I know your time is very valuable. So is mine. For other things we can be doing. About twenty-five years ago, my wife and I built a house in the woods. We enjoyed all of what Mother Nature had to offer, the sounds, the views. You could say that it served us well. Up until a point when the red barns started chilling out. And the first thing that happened is our view to the to the to the north is it diminished. And trees are gone. Next thing to come in was the bulldozers and excavators. In two thousand and seventeen, I had a pulmonary embolism. Anderson Mercy sent me home to get my affairs together, one of the toughest toughest times in my life. Mr. Evans come over and he told me, he said, look, I don't want you to be upset. I don't want you to get worked up. I'm only going to build a couple, couple more buildings and they're going to be cold storage. Not going to have any heat or plumbing. We just have electric. There was really nothing I could do about it. But I I recovered. I I I healed up. But I heard I heard some testimony tonight that, you know, I want to I want to add add something to. And though I'm not the greatest with the video, I I take pictures. That's my thing. I take a lot of pictures. And when the when the trees were down and cleaned up and processed and the the equipment come in, there was a there was no sediment control methods employed. So I'd like to share these pictures with you.
This is after after rainstorm.
Great. Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
So the 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 effect we got after after, you know, some time, I can't tell you exactly how long it was, but it was within a probably a year's time. We experienced silting end of the stream between the the red barns and my house. That Little Hedges Row to the south has a has a small stream in it. It's a it's more of a drainage ditch, but. I took these pictures in three of three twenty twenty-one. This is the creek that has silted it. Now, what happens next is the bottom of the creek is raised up. And when you get a rain, there's nowhere for the water to go. So it it spills out of its banks and takes a path of least resistance, that being across my driveway into Mr. Gordon's field. It kind of travels to the the southwest. And all that water goes to the southwest there. But, you know, it it's just a real pain to have to deal with that. Get your gravel back on your driveway and and, you know, it becomes a maintenance issue. So after that, the I guess the important thing to note is the property got paved and all these buildings get put in. And before the pavement, there's these catch basins and and drain tiles that take the water off of the property. A lot of those, so when you look at this, that catch pond up top, there's a big difference in elevation there. The water that falls down on this lower ground has no way of getting up into that pond and and, you know, trickling out at a slower rate. So what has taken place is you might be able to see them from some other pictures is there are some catch basins in the lower part of the Union Township ground that encapsulates that water with the quickness and shoots it out the tube into that little drainage ditch. If you've ever had a plum, a pipe that's plugged up and you call the plumber, he brings a jetter out and he runs a jetter through your pipe and cleans the the muck out of it. Well, that's the same effect that this storm drains or whatever you whatever you would call these, these drain tiles from catch basins and gutters or wherever this water's been redirected from. It sends it down that thing in a in a torrent faster than it's ever gone down there before. And today, that sediment is not there because it got jetted out. And it went all the way down and off of that property, the next property, and the property beyond it. But the problem is, is that that water's going so fast that now that the sediment's gone, it's starting to take some of our ground too. So we're experiencing erosion. A lot of that Union Township water doesn't go in to the stream until it's in Hamilton County. So it becomes a more complicated problem now. But as I'm trying to heal up, my wife and I finally decided that we're going to throw in the towel and move off. We're going to done deal with this stuff. And so I listed my house with Comey and Shepherd, a gentleman by the name of Mike Mertlin. Good guy. He sold a piece I had on Eight Mile and it exceeded my wildest ideas on value. We followed his direction as to what we should list it for and put it on the market, just knowing that it would sell. But the problem is we were too late as our value has already been diminished. Not only has it been diminished, but our marketability got messed up too. We have a piece that I can't, I really can't even market because now it has a stigma about it. Nobody wants to buy anything with stigma. So this property was listed for two times. Mike come back to me and this was before the height of the, you know, the the housing price increase. So he said, hey, give me another shot at this. I think we can, I think we'll get it sold. And well, we never got a single offer. And I have a beautiful home, I think. The one thing we did get is I got feedback from potential buyers, people that looked at it. We had a lot of visits. A lot of people come because, you know, it's it looked it looked real well. So this is the feedback I got from.
Thank you.
Comey and Shepherd. And what it says, and I'm not going to wear you guys out with hundreds of pictures because, I mean, that is my thing, but I'm going to show you a few of this and a few of that. This is, the general consensus on the feedback we got is we love your house. We love your your buildings. We love your property. But we would never live next to an industrial park like that. So that's where the stigma comes in. I had my property appraised. You've heard, you've heard, you know, testimony as to how the values have risen. My value was reduced by half. And I can prove it. This is the appraisal I received and there's an addition there that. So that is on my house and three and a half acres or three point whatever acres in Union Township. I also have some industrial ground that is part of this place in Hamilton County. So I made a complaint with the Hamilton, with the Claremont County Auditor and.
That's interesting.
They made a determination that the appraisal and what I was telling them is spot on. And they reduced my property value on the house and the three acres in Union Township from four hundred and ten thousand dollars to two hundred and five.
So it's three seventy-three.
The assessed value? It has to be from the auditor's office, assessed value? Okay.
No, no, no. They they followed the fifty, fifties.
So it's the assessed value is thirty percent less typically than, okay.
No, they they give me fifty percent of what is, oh, what is assessed now.
Typically, the assessed value is about thirty-five percent lower of the market value.
That's correct.
So auditor value, two hundred and five thousand, they're saying at least, that's seventy percent of the value. Okay. What is the state? So is there a date earlier?
That was just less than a month ago.
Twenty twenty-three is, is there, does someone have a document, is there a date? Is there a date earlier that shows before twenty twenty? I'm just getting the, no, it's twenty twenty. Yeah, twenty twenty. That's the, yeah, okay. All right. All right, I'll write down the question.
All right. You've also heard testimony in the past about the the lights and, you know, the views and and I can I can attest to Building I because I look at Building I every day. This is my view of Building I. This is from my back porch and that's what I get the look at.
Okay.
I took this picture just a few nights ago. These are the, these are the lights that don't point upward that you heard testimony about. This is Building I and that's from my yard.
Are these lights inside or outside?
They're inside lights and they're shining through a a lens to let light in. But at night, if you leave the lights on, the light shines out. There's just another couple of pictures of Building I. This is from my property. You've heard, you may have heard testimony of how beautiful the buildings are. That's the view of the natural stone that I get the look at every day.
Good.
How long have you lived there? When did you buy the property?
Twenty-five.
I'm sorry?
What year did you buy the property?
I can't tell you for sure, but it's a it's a good story, so I'm going to share it with you. Out of high school, a friend of mine and I bought this property together. And boy, did we pay for it. Cost us seven hundred dollars an acre and that was a lot of money back then, for us, anyway. But Ed Utz, he was a client of mine in Indian Hill. He was in a, he was a pretty prominent attorney. He was handling the the, you know, the paperwork on it and he got sick and died. So we were a couple of years waiting for his caseload that got handed over to to James May. And if you guys remember James May, he was over on Oak Street. He 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 got he got murdered over there. So we had to wait a couple, two or three more years until little Jim May, James's son, got around to getting Ed's work done, his dad's work done, and and that's when we finally got a deed on it. And I'm going to say that was the late eighties, early nineties. I know I swore, but I don't know.
Twenty to thirty years roughly.
Yes. Yeah. Oh, well, I built a house twenty-six years ago, so it's been over thirty years. I'm the oldest oldest guy. I used to be the youngest guy, but now I'm the oldest guy down there. Next would be Jack Gordon and then Doug and and now his boys, you know? And I've known them kids and I've known Doug for forever. And, you know, this is a very unfortunate thing that that I have to get up here. You know, he's got to get up here and Mr. Gordon's got to get up here. This is, this has been a crazy turn of events down here. And I think I think there's a lesson by all of us to be learned. And that lesson is until you have something like a pulmonary embolism or in two thousand and twenty-one, I got diagnosed with adult cystic fibrosis. So until you have something like that happen to you, sometimes it's difficult to put things in perspective. I appreciate your time. Can I have my papers back or do you guys want?
Mr. Gratch, just hold on one moment.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Becker, do you have any questions at all?
No.
Mr. Luke, do you have any questions?
I can hold stuff for our discussion, but I can can kind of introduce this question now.
I'll try and answer them the best I can.
All right, just so I at least want to be able to share with the board.
Sure.
So I think, Trustee Dills, you've got the, so it's just, you've got that, yeah, the feedback from buyers listed there in front of you. So you guys are well aware, Union Township can be a small place sometimes.
Did you give all of these feedbacks?
Well, I'm just kidding. Well, I can say absolutely beautiful property. I loved it. I toured it in two thousand and twenty. It was listed for about seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Why didn't you buy it?
Why didn't you buy?
Yes.
I wouldn't be here today if you'd have bellied up and just give me your.
Did the best that I possibly could to tell my wife how we could figure out how to do it and scratch the money together to be do, be able to do it. I loved it. As soon as we pulled in, there was bucks running through the yard. And I was like, this, that's a sign, honey. Like, it's gorgeous. Loved it. And but I, I love it. I'd still be there. I love it. I'd still be, I would be there if I could. Um, but, um, but yeah, so the feedback that, that ultimately worked through, through us on that was, uh, I remember the layout of, of the house. The upstairs had one bathroom, and we have a growing family, five, three, and one-year-old down.
Your feedback is in there.
And, um, yeah, and, um, and, uh, the, and then I remember trying to pitch the idea that the area over the garage that was unfinished still would be something I could finish.
That was gonna be the master.
Yeah, yeah. And, um, so, but the end of the day, our, our real estate agent, um, I mean, between everything, and then it came down to actually being able to get a loan and afford for it, because it was three hundred and seven dollars a square foot. And that was, uh, that we didn't have, there, based on our side, it didn't have the comparables to be able to support that. Uh, so I would have had to come out of pocket largely to be able to try to, to put that together and financially, just not make any sense at that, at that rate, that value. So, 'cause at the time, and that's what that shows too, and I'm not, you know, just giving that to share with the board. It's odd, but interesting between, we've visited multiple properties. Uh, maybe neither, neither of them were in the market at the time, but I was in the market and, uh, but yeah, it came down to those differences between the assessed value, what we thought it could be appraised for, um, and, uh, you recognize and read on there. People do make comment about the red barns and concern, but they do make comment about the price being out of their range and being high.
Right.
Um, and that's, that's all be, I, the beholder, trust me. I tried to sell my wife on it as much as I possibly could, and any bank or any type of finance I could have got. So I think it's absolutely gorgeous and beautiful, so I just wanted to share that with the board.
I'm always, always working, so if you haven't found a place, come on by, I'll work you, I'll work you out for special deals.
I can't, uh, I, uh.
We got a red barn special down there.
Mr. Yoder, uh, I will defer that one to the law director.
Yeah, hold on, hold on one second, hold on, hold on one second. Uh, so I wanted to confirm, the, uh, uh, the water runoff was, was one of your issues, your decline in home value and the lights out of the building that's right next to your property. Is that, is that the issues that I'm hearing from you, Mr. Gratch?
That's what you've heard so far. I can go on and on. I've been there for a long time. Uh, when Mr. Evans bought the house up on top of the hill to get water, he had, so Janet had well water, like we got well water. And his well water was, it wasn't good well water, and it's Claremont County well water. So, uh, he took it upon himself to buy that place up there to bring water over the hill for these buildings. And then in that process, he knew my need for water. He, I, he was a friend of mine. I hope he still is someday, but he told me, he said, look, you gotta help me clear this. If you help me clear, you gotta do something to justify this water, so come on up there and help me clear it. So I went up with Bill Boyd on two different days. I have a Ficon forestry mulcher on a, uh, on a machine and, we, we cleared that, not the, on the eleven acres, but on the piece that he bought for his son. And, uh, and then, uh, you know, when I, I asked him about the water, he, he said he, he didn't remember telling me that. But, uh, I think the gentleman's name is Doug Smith, and Doug, what, Evans and I were, we went to Claremont County and sat down together and talked to him and how he could, he could conveniently forget that we had those conversations just tells me a lot. So. So at this, at this point, uh, you know, I probably said enough to, to, to show you what's really going on, uh, down there, so.
Yeah. And Mr. Gratch, uh, Mr. Becker, actually, one, one more question for you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so in, in a, in a previous discussion before you came up, we were talking about building I.
Yes, sir.
And we were talking about this thing called agricultural exemption.
Yes, sir.
So because of that, assuming the agricultural exemption would apply, and at the end of the day, I guess the court would make that decision. But that would be the argument, that would qualify for, for that exemption, therefore, that building is in compliance, and we can't do anything, we, we can't, we can't do anything about it if, if we wanted to. And, and even if, we could make them tear it down and, and, and move it so it's within five feet of the property line. And that doesn't change your lifestyle at all, it's just being five feet further away, it's not gonna make any difference. So I guess what is it that you're asking us to do here?
Well, I'm asking you to acknowledge and agree with the facts that I presented you. I don't, I don't think you need to, to, uh, make a, a change as, uh, you know. I think it's perfectly fine the way it is. Uh, but at some point, you gotta understand that the past regime has, and other people have put me in this position. I didn't ask for anything. When my wife and I went and decided we were gonna build a house on this property, I could have rezoned the Anderson ground from industrial to residential, but I didn't. I built on the Union Township side. We had friends in Union Township. When I went to zoning, I knew with confidence that nothing like this would ever, could never happen to us. Uh, and, uh, you know, things happen. But at some point, uh, someone has to accept the responsibility for this. Otherwise, I'm not gonna be made whole, and I deserve that. You see my property values, you see our, I'll tell you a story. I got my granddaughter with me. We're going down the driveway, and we see a, a guy pulling his drawers up, scuffling across out of the fence rope over to, uh, the lower, the, the red barn in the middle over on my side. And my dau, my granddaughter, she was about five or six years old, she said, what's he doing, grandpa? I said, he's pooping in the woods. And I shouldn't have to do that. That's unacceptable. My wife, another example, my wife and I are on the back patio, oblivious. A guy walks around the corner of the barn, and he relieves himself. Never even looked up, had no idea we were there, full frontal. I mean, we're all adults, no big deal. But if that would have been my granddaughter, unacceptable. So there's, there, there are holding tanks in there now. The, the, the light pollution is one thing. The noise pollution consists of backup alarms. High water alarms on the, the holding tanks that are on each of these buildings. Uh, the burglar alarm that's on the, the, uh, American Landscape Building. These go off every time, it seems like every time a mouse runs through there and breaks the sensor, eating, you know, some seed or something. It might go off for ten minutes, it might go off for two hours. The high water alarm, between Christmas and New Year, did not stop. There was no one to come down and reset it. So we got to listen to the high water alarm. And the high water septic alarm has gone off numerous times. I have, I, believe me, when I tell you I got video of it, I have a lot of video too. But, you know, I'm, I'd have to show you on my phone, but the, the, I'm holding the phone up with it on the, you know, the, turned around, looking at me, the selfie, selfie side of it, and you can just hear this thing screaming, and it screams for days sometimes. I have text messages where I've, I've, I've sent texts to either Doug or Zach Peterson, and Doug is usually pretty good about getting it shut off, but if he's not available, uh, and you got to deal with somebody else, or they're on, they're out for, for holiday, you gotta listen to that. These guys do not live here, however, his sons are moving in, uh, but they have a different benefit than the other people, you know? That's a, that's the thing. We, we live what they put out, and that's, that's not right. It shouldn't be like that. So to, to answer your question, what do I want? I wanna be acknowledged, and I want somebody to accept the responsibility for this. Maybe you guys can tell me who that is, or in your ruling, you might be able to show me who that is. But at some point, I don't think I should have to take a two hundred and five thousand dollar lick on my real estate because of some red barns that were built in the manner they were built, so.
Thank you, Mr. Gratch.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Gratch, much.
Very good.
And before, before we have anyone else come up, what were you gonna say?
Uh, he'd ask for his papers.
Yeah, please.
Would it be possible for us to make copies of what he's presented to the board so we can keep a copy as a part of the record?
It's a great idea. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Ody.
So. If we, we, yeah, we gotta take, if we can handle this one, but, uh. Just what you, what you presented to the board. Thank you, sir.
Okay, so, hey, gentlemen, let's do this. We're at two hours and thirty-five, forty minutes. I'm gonna entertain a motion to briefly recess.
So, uh.
One second.
Okay. Mr. Kim, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
We're at, uh, in recess at eight thirty-eight P. M.
Okay, we'll be back just briefly, restroom break, shut your legs break.
Thank you.
I think one year he paid only three thousand dollars worth of taxes on that. And now he's paying significantly more. What I can say is, you're welcome. You know, when you complain loud and long enough, somebody will eventually take action. I'm hoping this board does the same. His slides where they progress through the building don't even show all of the buildings. They end before two or three of the buildings are completed. I don't know if that was just an omission or if that's something more sinister. When I did that, the bank waived an appraisal. I didn't know that they actually did an appraisal. I didn't care. They were waiving it. I didn't know what they thought my property value was worth, but it's important to know that I built my barn legally. Right? I came to the township and I said, I want to build a barn. They said, great. It can be a maximum this size. You have a residence. This is the size of your lot. It can be a thousand square feet. I said, fantastic. That's just the size I want. And then I went to the county and I got my building permits and I got all of my proper inspections and I did what I was supposed to do to build my building. So please don't let their council have you believing that I did something as nefarious as they have done. The twenty seventeen appraisal on my property was before I'd given some land to my brother as a gift. So they're playing some games with the timeline here and I don't want you to be confused thinking that, you know, my property is worth more. I better give some to my brother. It was, it didn't happen like that. It's, it's. They're just trying to confuse and muddy the issue. I did try to mediate with Mr. Evans. I spent most of the day downtown. And I really tried. I really tried to get out from underneath this thing. I wanted to. His proffer to me was not only to buy me out, but hey, I'm also gonna buy your brother and your dad out. So I want this problem to just go away. I'm gonna throw a bunch of money at it. Well, I built that house with my own two hands. My wife helped me. My dad helped me. Three of my brothers helped me build that house and I fully intended to live there forever. It was beautiful. You see in the original image, there was a number of trees. It was a beautiful piece of property. Now, my property is still beautiful. The adjacent property is, is not beautiful, in my opinion. Just working my way down the list as I heard things from their council. Does anybody believe that a light bulb on the side of a barn is thirty-five watts? That's, that's the wattage of a light bulb that you put in your microwave. That's not the wattage of a light bulb that you light a barn with. And I have to look at them every night. Many of the lights and many of the side lights when people leave lights on and they're pointed right at my front porch and they're very bright lights. I don't have the pictures that Mr. Gratch has taken, so all I can do is testify to the fact that they're bright and it causes significant light pollution. They're not pointed downward. They're pointing right at my front porch. Drainage. Testifying that, that there's no drainage issue on the property? If that's the case, why is there an open WMSC violation with the county? I don't, I don't understand that. That's, that's strange. Maybe you can explain that to me. Talks about a pond. What pond? The detention pond is on an adjacent parcel uphill. It doesn't drain any of the water on that parcel. The traffic count. Fantastic. They've done a traffic count. Now, they've done the traffic count after I've successfully won some motions in court and have evicted a significant number of businesses from that property and they're still, even with the reduced property, ten vehicles per hour and these guys aren't working nine to five. They're ten or twelve hours back there. They're landscaping businesses, right? So a hundred and twenty cars, trucks, tractor trailers, semis, full-size semis, all manner of vehicles. A hundred and twenty of them a day plus whatever he wants to have approved with a PD? Talk to me about how that fixes my quality of life. I already talked about taxes, fraud, and CAUV, so I won't beat that one up again. Talked about the fantastic electric that he bought brought down under his own power. Well, the electric never fell down, as Mr. Evans testified. I never really had a problem with the electric. It was single-phase that was coming down the hill. And when I built my house, I told the guy in the electric company, I said, I want to make sure I can power a pole barn. I want to put a shop in there, maybe a little woodworking shop or something, maybe power a welder. He said, oh, don't worry. You've got enough power for maybe ten homes. Great. So we've destroyed the single-phase and he pulled three-phase back there. Well, why do you need three-phase electric for a state residential? You don't. You need three-phase electric for business, right? You run business machinery off three-phase electric. Thanks for the upgrade. And they turned my power off on Sunday in the winter to move me from the single-phase to the three-phase. And I said, why? On a Sunday in the winter? Well, that was the only time the mechanic would let us turn it off. Great. Appreciate that. I already talked about the fraud with the landscaper being in the building for ten years, so I won't beat that one up again. I'm glad that Building I has turkey in it now. That's fantastic. That doesn't excuse the fraud that has been perpetrated with that building specifically over the last six years since that one's been up. There has been, to my knowledge, an exercise equipment reseller in there. And at one time, there was a Mexican food distributor with full-size tractor trailers and they were storing Mexican food in Business I, Building I. That's not, that's not agriculture. That's, that's fraud. Now, I didn't hear Mr. Evans once mention Jamie Fox Landscaping, so that may be something that you brought. Oh, yeah, so the other thing I find funny about this slide is we're showing we're showing just a little sliver of Union Township. Why do we care about Anderson Township at all? This is Union Township. This is the Union Township Trustees Meeting. We've propped this image not to show you the abundance of residential just to the east of this image. I mean, you've got estate residential, loads of it up the hill there. And you're getting a pretty fantastic tax revenue out of those estate residential properties. If we want to go back and talk about the CAUV and taxes for just a minute, you know, don't keep the barns just because the taxes are great. Well, what about those eight years where he paid less tax on his property than I paid on mine? To have 11 buildings and a number of businesses came with revenue for him. I think one year he paid only $3,000 worth of taxes on that. And now he's paying significantly more. What I can say is, you're welcome. You know, when you complain loud and long enough, somebody will eventually take action. I'm hoping this board does the same. His slides where they progress through the building don't even show all of the buildings. They end before two or three of the buildings are completed. I don't know if that was just an omission or if that's something more sinister. Yeah, so I did refinance my home. And I did that to build a pole barn, a garage for myself. When I did that, the bank waived an appraisal. I didn't know that they actually did an appraisal. I didn't care. They were waiving it. I didn't know what they thought my property value was worth. But it's important to know that I built my barn legally, right? I came to the township and I said, I want to build a barn. They said, great. It can be a maximum this size. You have a residence. This is the size of your lot. It can be 1,000 square feet. I said, fantastic. That's just the size I want. And then I went to the county and I got my building permits and I got all of my proper inspections. And I did what I was supposed to do to build my building. So please don't let their council have you believing that I did something as nefarious as they have done. The 2017 appraisal on my property was before I'd given some land to my brother as a gift. So, you know, they're playing some games with the timeline here. And I don't want you to be confused thinking that, you know, my property is worth more. I better give some to my brother. It was, it didn't happen like that. It's, it's, they're just trying to confuse and muddy the issue. I did try to mediate with Mr. Evans. I spent most of the day downtown. And I really tried. I really tried to get out from underneath this thing. I wanted to. His proffer to me was not only to buy me out, but hey, I'm also going to buy your brother and your dad out. So I want this problem to just go away. I'm going to throw a bunch of money at it. Well, I built that house with my own two hands. My wife helped me. My dad helped me. Three of my brothers helped me build that house. And I fully intended to live there forever. It was beautiful. You see in the original image, there was a number of trees. It was a beautiful piece of property. Now, my property is still beautiful. The adjacent property is not beautiful, in my opinion. Just working my way down the list as I heard things from their council. Does anybody believe that a light bulb on the side of a barn is 35 watts? That's the wattage of a light bulb that you put in your microwave. That's not the wattage of a light bulb that you light a barn with. And I have to look at them every night, many of the lights and many of the side lights when people leave lights on. And they're pointed right at my front porch and they're very bright lights. I don't have the pictures that Mr. Gratch has taken. So all I can do is testify to the fact that they're bright. And it causes significant light pollution. They're not pointed downward. They're pointing right at my front porch. Drainage. Testifying that there's no drainage issue on the property? If that's the case, why is there an open WMSC violation with the county? I don't understand that. That's strange. Maybe you can explain that to me. Talks about a pond. What pond? The detention pond is on an adjacent parcel uphill. It doesn't drain any of the water on that parcel. The traffic count, fantastic. They've done a traffic count. Now, they've done the traffic count after I've successfully won some motions in court and have evicted a significant number of businesses from that property. And they're still, even with the reduced property, 10 vehicles per hour. And these guys aren't working nine to five. They're 10 or 12 hours back there. They're landscaping businesses, right? So 120 cars, trucks, tractor trailers, semis, full-size semis, all manner of vehicles. 120 of them a day, plus whatever he wants to have approved with a PD? Talk to me about how that fixes my quality of life. I already talked about taxes, fraud, and CAUV, so I won't beat that one up again. Talked about the fantastic electric that he bought, brought down under his own power. Well, the electric never fell down, as Mr. Evans testified. I never really had a problem with the electric. It was single-phase that was coming down the hill. And when I built my house, I told the guy in the electric company, I said, I want to make sure I can power a pole barn. I want to put a shop in there, maybe a little woodworking shop or something, maybe power a welder. He said, oh, don't worry. You've got enough power for maybe 10 homes. Great. So we've destroyed the single-phase and he pulled three-phase back there. Well, why do you need three-phase electric for a state residential? You don't. You need three-phase electric for business, right? You run business machinery off three-phase electric. Thanks for the upgrade. And they turned my power off on Sunday in the winter to move me from the single-phase to the three-phase. And I said, why on a Sunday in the winter? Well, that was the only time the mechanic would let us turn it off. Great. Appreciate that. I already talked about the fraud with the landscaper being in the building for 10 years, so I won't beat that one up again. I'm glad that Building I has turkey in it now. That's fantastic. That doesn't excuse the fraud that has been perpetrated with that building specifically over the last six years since that one's been up. There has been, to my knowledge, an exercise equipment reseller in there. And at one time, there was a Mexican food distributor with full-size tractor trailers. And they were storing Mexican food in Business I, Building I. That's not agriculture. That's fraud. Now, I didn't hear Mr. Evans once mention Jamie Fox Landscaping. So that may be something that you brought with you from a conversation outside.
No, Mr. Evans mentioned it here. I remember that as soon as he said it, that's why.
Yeah, when I moved back there, Janet, 80-something years old, she was renting to a landscaper. They had three or four trucks and they were running a business out of there. New to the area. I don't, you know, 16 years younger than I was now. And I don't know what I don't know. It was illegal then. That's great. It's still illegal to be running businesses out of there. Landscaping isn't agriculture. We talk about personal storage. 67,000 square feet of building. I mean, I know Mr. Evans owns a lot of toys, but 67,000 square feet. And again, how do you enforce that? Who inspects it? How often do you inspect it? It's unenforceable. So, Mr. Logue, you talked about the zoning inspector going out there and getting something accomplished on that property. Well, he hasn't. The township hasn't really accomplished anything. The dumpsters are still where they were. You know, they woke me up at 6:30 Tuesday morning, smashing around dumpsters on the property. It's still not in compliance. The zoning department really hasn't accomplished anything other than sending a 15-day letter. There's no screening around the dumpsters. Illegal businesses are still there. WMSC issues are still rampant. Buildings are still unpermitted. It's fraud. I'm going to end with one thing and then you can ask me all the questions you want. Something I found on the internet. I just want to read it because it seems a little fitting at this moment. Says, do the right thing by yourself or by others. Live with integrity, knowing you have always done the right thing by other people. Those who put others down to get ahead won't stay ahead for long. Do the right thing by others and they will do the right thing to you. When no one is watching, live as if everyone is watching. Do the right thing. Never do anything that you would not want done to yourself or anyone you love. What can I answer for you, gentlemen?
Go ahead, Mr. Becker.
Yeah, Mr. Gordon, so we've had a couple of conversations tonight about the current use of the property. I understand all your complaints from the past, but the issue today is current use. And also the agricultural exemption that we previously talked about. So with all that in mind, what is it that you're asking us to do? What are you looking to accomplish at this point?
Well, as Mr. Forbes stated, my goal to this evening is as simple as to just deny the PD. Like I said, if everything is a conditional use on the property, there's no reason to even seek PD. PD is terrible for the, not just myself and my neighbors, but it's terrible for the township. I mean, I will have your inspector out there weekly looking at the property because there's just no way to enforce any of it, right? There's just, there's no way. So all I want you to do is deny the PD and let me to continue to find the legal recourse that I've been seeking over the last three years.
Okay, Mr. Gordon, so if we do deny the PD and assuming his property qualifies for that agricultural exemption, and I think he's got good argument for that personally, based on my understanding of it, then a lot of the complaints I'm hearing tonight, you know, the lights, the buildings, locations, none of that changes. I mean, what would change is the landscaping business.
Yeah, that's not entirely true. Ohio law, I think, has set some good precedence that if you do things with the intent to fraud, those things can be undone. And I think I've got a sizable mountain of evidence in my court case with Mr. Miles, Judge Miles, to prove that fraud. And my end goal will be to seek restitution for that fraud.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm going to go down kind of just a list of some notes I made as going through with this. I'll pop up when there's a direct question, I guess. Let me see here. Restart. Okay. For the public hearing side of this and knowledge, introductory statement on PD, that was about children's hospital. It's not about the PD of this case. So they're two separate cases and each individual case has to be uniquely looked at. While, again, we apply the lens of what is in the authority and limitations of the board.
So your statement about quality of life for the residents only applies in the children's hospital PD?
I'm going to go through my list of my notes and just address that that was taken as if it was a statement during this public hearing. And it was not. And I'm clarifying for the record that it is not a statement for the public record. But I will absolutely double down that the quality of life is considered in this case.
That's all I'm asking.
And this scenario, absolutely. The statement was stated as if this PD does not have quality of life in Union Township. And that was putting words in my mouth, so. So I do have a question. You referenced a character of growth for the township. Your brother, right, your brother moved to the property? That's one thing that stands out. When did he move?
I don't know. I think he started building in 2018, maybe. And I think he plans to testify. You're welcome to pick his brain. I will tell you that he moved with the understanding that we were already in a legal battle with the hopes that the township would eventually enforce its investigation.
Yeah, I'm just going to scan through my list here. But gentlemen, I will just point one thing out. I'm always very cautious on my background. I've done some work and engagement with Office of Special Investigations in proving contract fraud and seeing indicators of fraud. And that's one thing that my, you know, I, myself, anyone else that's outside of essentially the prosecutor prosecuting case or a judge and jury can actually identify and indicate. So I've heard that a lot tonight in this public hearing. And I'm just saying, from my personal perspective, that's nothing that legality and fraud is something that is a determination that one of us can weigh in on. Again, I think it sticks to the form of what we're here for, which is PD, which the number one items to keep it on track that I've heard is traffic, stormwater, lights, noise, bathrooms, and/or enforcement of if anyone is showing themselves publicly. Commercial vehicle uses, residential storage, and dumpsters. So I think I'll leave it at that and just continue on, so.
Mr. Gordon, you, who's your father, I also met, right?
Yes.
Okay. Good people.
Appreciate it.
Nice, good people. I believe you truly want to just live there in peace. I got that sense. And so I appreciate the tour you gave me, walking me through everything. Gave me a good perspective. So I just wanted to say I appreciate that. And showed me around. I have never heard of Jamie Fox Landscaping until Mr. Evans brought it up when he was talking. So that's why I was asking about it. From, you tell me if I'm wrong. Is there currently two landscaping companies close by, adjacent to that property that are currently operating out of there? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Not on Evans' property. Let's forget Evans' property for a minute. It's the surroundings. Is that correct? There's two other landscaping companies?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, I was told otherwise. I didn't verify. That's why I'm asking. So, okay, so.
Not on Mr. Evans' property?
Correct. Let's forget about this property just for a minute. I believe.
The closest landscaper, to my knowledge, is Evans Landscaping on Roundbottom Road. Oh, there is a Gilb Landscaping that's on the corner of Mount Carmel and Roundbottom, which is in Anderson Township in an industrial area.
If they choose to come back up and rebuttal anything, I'll ask them that question because I thought, I was told that there was another landscaping, or two landscaping companies, pretty nearby in relatively the same area.
Their definition of nearby and mine may be different. I don't know.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. Okay, so I, because I'd asked you this on your property when I visited you. I know you're asking us to deny this.
That's all I'm asking.
For my understanding, and I've asked two law directors that work for our law firm. I've asked our administrator. If it's zone plan development, you understand the township has more control of it. If it's, whereas if it's devoted agricultural, from my understanding, and I can even toss it over to Mr. Yoder to confirm what I'm saying, but we would have more control. Everything that he ever decides to do would have to come back to the board for a vote. That's my understanding. Am I right or wrong on that?
Well, you have a lot of control over it now as a state residential. All I'm asking you to do is enforce the control that you have as it's currently zoned.
Okay, 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 fair enough. Okay, so you're the biggest name in this case on the other side. So that's why I'm asking you. What compromise, you and Mr. Evans, you tried, you said to compromise years back. What compromise would you like? And I'll tell you, my definition of compromise is you win some, you win some, you lose some, you lose some. There's compromise, right? I think everybody would agree with that definition. It's very generous. What compromise would you like out of the Evans property?
At this point, I'm seeking for the Claremont County Court of Com, please to come up with that compromise. I'm not looking for that to come out of the trustee meeting in Union Township.
We do have some say in that. We could help. Is there anything you want us to do at all? Anything?
Listen, I'm looking, I'm looking, I'm looking to just continue the path that I've been on for the last 10 years, which has led me to being in court with Mr. Evans for three years now. And I'd like to just continue down that road. I'm not looking to agree to anything tonight that's going to supersede anything that happens in that court of law.
Okay, okay. I can't, the problem is, is we don't know when that court date's going to be. It could be three months, six months, a year.
Yeah, and during that time, the township can enforce its own.
We can't kick the can down the road. We're not, I've already asked. Can we just wait till the courts decide or not? We can't do that. That's not possible. So we have to make a decision. And I'm asking you, if we make a decision, what would you like to see conceded besides a no vote? Let's hypothetically forget that for a moment. Because that's all or nothing. It's black or white. I'm asking you, is there any gray area with you at all? I don't want to be more clear with my question. What would you like, because, for example, Mr. Evans comes up and says, what would you like me to do? I'll give him access to water. I'll build a detention pond. I'll do this. I'll put landscaping, whatever. He said, I'm going to compromise. Is there any compromise on your side at all? Besides simply black and white, no vote, that's it in a discussion?
Well, if he was willing to compromise, I would expect his counsel, Mr. O'Connor, to reach out to my counsel, Mr. Walliver, and start talking about compromise. Instead, when we were ordered by the court to compromise, his compromise was I'll buy your property to make you go away. A home that I built with my own two hands. That's not compromise.
The ball's in your court right now. I'm asking you.
Understood.
I can't, we have to make a decision tonight.
Right.
And trust me, the easy thing would be to do is to pass the buck and say, hey, let's wait till the court sides. That's not an option.
I'm not asking you to do that.
So I can't wait for his attorney to talk to your attorney. We've got to decide soon.
Yep.
What, wait? I'm going to ask you one more time. If you don't have an answer, you don't have an answer. Is there any compromise at all that you'd like us to hear or listen to at all?
I don't have a compromise. I'm just looking for a no vote.
Roger that. Okay, I'm clear. Mr. Becker, do you have anything else? No, Mr. Love?
I just do want to recognize that, I appreciate you recognizing that the government and the board took action and acknowledged the property concerns with having the zoning inspector out there and addressing it, getting it to a place where the board is involved and engaged. And that's what this process worked through, so. That's all.
I'd like to apologize to you. I didn't realize that I had named you on that suit so early in your tenure here at the township.
So for the board's knowledge, in January of 2020, I got asked, or I got named in a lawsuit.
You were elected in 2019?
Yeah, so it was within the first two, three weeks of being a township trustee, I was named on a lawsuit, first one ever in my life.
Did you even have a meeting yet?
I haven't, huh?
Did you even have a trustee meeting yet?
Maybe not. I mean, we had our reorganization meeting, but the lawsuit came about the third week in January. So as early as that was. You know, and I, yeah, you know, I asked the question then, what I was told it'll likely be thrown out as the township does not have standing and we got removed from the lawsuit. That's not, I guess that's how legally it ruled outside there. And I asked the follow-up questions. Is there anything wrong with that property? And I got told no. So we are where we are today.
Yeah, and just briefly to talk about how it was thrown out of the appeals court. It was interesting to hear the township argue that you didn't have to enforce the zoning resolution because there was no legal obligation for Corey Wright to do that, which is why that motion didn't move forward with the township involved. So, no legal obligation for the zoning director to do his job, which won in court, but it leaves me wondering.
No, you don't have.
Just going to reiterate that, you know, from my perspective, and I'm sure for this board, that, you know, the courage to do the right thing. You know, it's not, like you said, sometimes it's a very easy thing to just say black and white, but it takes courage to have to sit in the position and hear everything, so. No, I think I'm good right now, so thank you.
You, your concerns and gripes against the property, I get it. We know I get it completely. I do. I get it. Just want you to know that.
Yeah, and it's unfortunate to hear you consider them as gripes because they're violations of the zoning resolution.
Concerns, whatever you want to call it. I hope you understand. I'm just trying to sympathize is what I'm saying.
Understood.
Yeah. But I get it. I understand, you know, why you're, yeah, yeah, I hear you. I'm clear.
Yeah, I'm certainly not looking for anybody to expand the use back there. I'm looking for it to go away, to be used as houses. It's a state residential. Let's make it a state residential.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I absolutely share that same perspective. I mean, part of the reason why I toured Mr. Gratch's house when I was moving was partly because the property that was adjacent to my property got a bunch of homes shotgunned in on it. Fifty thousand, or 50 feet of elevation change. And it put 10 feet of water in my backyard and put my fence underwater. You know, and it was something that was eye-opening. So I completely understand his perspective. But, yeah, I completely understand perspective. And things can change. Things can change within the control of what you have or what you have control over, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Thanks, guys, for your time.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anything else I'd like to speak tonight? Yeah, please, come on up. Okay, so let me go swear again. Sir, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, anything about the truth, so if you got?
I do.
Great. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is James Gordon. It's 4314 Mount Carmel Road. So I'm the brother. So as I said, good evening. My name is James Gordon. I'll try to keep this relatively brief. I don't have much to add that you haven't heard from others yet. So all I can really hope to do, as you mentioned earlier, is to explain some of my situation. So as you, as you know, as you well know now, I moved out to this area of discussion relatively recently. I think I've been there for a year and a half now. We started building in 2020, I think. Sometime early 2020. Moved in about a year and a half ago. So you probably wonder, you know, why I chose to move out here if the conditions are as bad as they've been presented to you. So I grew up, obviously, living at my parents' house at 4302 Mount Carmel Road, so I grew up in the area. I consider myself pretty familiar with the area. After I graduated college, I moved out, you know, like most people hope their kids do. I spent seven or eight years of my life living on a particularly busy street. So as someone brought up earlier, I lived on Linwood Avenue, which, if you're not familiar with, is where Beach Montlevy terminates into residential space going into Mount Lookout. So as you can imagine, that stretch of road is incredibly noisy. It's traffic, noise, all hours of the day. So when I was given an opportunity to build in an area that I knew to be significantly different, I didn't hesitate. So along with the offer of land to build on, I will say that both my dad and my brother warned me multiple times of the situation. But I figured there was no way that it could actually compare to what I was used to, right? The traffic and noise on Linwood. There's no way it could be as bad out here, right? I truly wish that I had listened to their warnings. If I could go back in time, I wouldn't have built. I really wouldn't have. Since moving in, I've Um, since moving in, I've been amazed at the amount of traffic that these illegal barns generate. So it begins early in the morning. I've been woken up by semi trucks flying on a gravel driveway at 5:30 in the morning to drop off who knows what back at those barns. Trash collection seems to happen multiple times a week, early in the morning for these businesses. Uh, when I wake up and let my dog out, I hear trucks coming in, going out, I hear people talking, hear people yelling in the parking lots. Uh, there's cars that go by, fly by with no mufflers, FedEx or UPS, stopping me either on the drive or actually at my house to ask me where random businesses are. Uh, so the most recent one was a cabinetry company that I hadn't, that I noticed hasn't been brought up at all. I'm not sure if it's still there or not, or maybe it's turkeys now, who knows? It's not uncommon for me to find trash in my yard. So just earlier today, I found a Doritos bag and someone's application for their child to go to childcare. I don't know why this stuff doesn't go in the dumpsters that I know exist over there, but these workers that have no legal basis to even be there, obviously, they don't care about the property or the surrounding properties. They can't be bothered to put their trash in one of the dumpsters in the lot. The noise is constant, so there are people going back and forth all day, every day. It's not Monday through Friday traffic, it's every single day. I recently built a garden, I realized I couldn't put it where I wanted to, because it's not uncommon for the traffic mostly going to the barns, well, pretty much always going to the barns. They fly past my house going so fast that my yard is covered in dust. I've seen cars fly past, they have to be going 50, 60 miles an hour on a gravel drive, and my yard is dusted for 10, 15, 20 minutes. Anyway, I obviously didn't want my garden, you know, on my residential property to be covered in red dust. So, they said at the zoning commission meeting that they turned the barn lights off and parked cars and trucks inside, but those are lies. There's one American landscaping truck that actually likes to park outside facing my house. Several times now, we've been watching TV late at night, so it's dark out, only to have someone in a landscaping truck park facing my house with their brights on. They look into my windows? What, people that shouldn't even be back there, I don't, I don't get it. So I've had people knock on my door well after business hours, as later, as late as nine, uh, trying to get directions to the red barns to either meet people or buy things. These are clearly not people that work back there even, why are just random people going back there to do things? Uh, so I had one person even told me he was trying to buy sports tents, like, uh, sports tents, nine o'clock at night. What, why are you buying sports tents out of a red? What is a sports tent? Huh, I, I don't get it. Uh, people pull into my driveway, they sit and stare at me if I'm on my deck. I guess they get confused, 'cause they think my driveway might lead to the barns, I don't know. Um, it happens all the time, several times a week. Um, which, again, goes to speak to how much traffic is coming out here for people that don't even work for those businesses. They're, they're lost trying to find those businesses. Uh, the traffic is absolutely insane, uh, for residential property, surrounded by residential property. They have parties in these barns. One day I counted at least a dozen vehicles pull into my drive and try to figure out how to get to their barn party. Uh, I know I said I would keep this brief, I'm, I'm about done. So, um, there are people who will tell you that all of the issues I brought up don't exist. Uh, I can assure you that as someone who lives directly next to these issues, um, as well as on the road to this property, that as long as there are businesses being run out of the barn, uh, there's, there's no feasible way for him to, for, for him to address, um, the visual, noise, sound, light, dust, and trash pollution that affects my daily life. Because of the way these buildings have been illegally put up on this property, as close to the property line as they can, there's, there's literally not enough room for these barns to be screened. There's no screening for the barns, there's no screening for the noise, can't happen. As someone who works from home full-time, this, it's not just a problem for me in the evenings, I have to deal with all of this all the time. Uh, so I feel like when we spoke to the zoning board, that they understood our problems created by this illegal industrial park, and I hope that you take an appropriate action. Thank you for your time, questions?
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Becker, sir?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb, thank you very much. I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, come on up, sir. Okay, let me go swear again. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, anything about the truth, so if you've got?
I, I do.
Great, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jack Gordon, I'm at 4302 Mount Carmel Road. And I am gonna be brief, because my sons have covered most of this. I think I'm the last Gordon you're gonna have to hear from tonight.
That's okay.
Um, one of the things in Mark's, uh, um, summary of this, uh, project, he said, what you see is what you get with this project, okay? The, the lack of screening, the lack of setback, the, the no noise abatement, the, the light, no no, light abatement, all that stuff is what you get if you say yes to this. And it strikes me that, um, it strikes me that he's not asking you to do a P D so he could put chickens in one of his barns, or he can store household goods in one of his barns. The only reason to do the P D is so he can do commercial activity, which is what you've been hearing from everybody all night is the problem. It's the commercial activity that's, that he's going through. We're not asking you guys to make any decisions on the barns, we're asking you simply to deny the P D so that we can deal with the barns in court, which is what we've been trying to do for some time. Nothing that he's promised has he ever done. He says he wants to be a good neighbor, he denied water to Mr. Gratch. He says he wants to be a good neighbor, when my son was building his house, he denied power across the right-of-way coming in, and my son had to get it from his brother and trench it for something like 200 yards to get it to his house, because Evans would give it to him, okay? He's not a good neighbor, he's not gonna give anything to anybody, he's not gonna change his ways, he's not going to stop his commercial activity. If you give him this P D, it's gonna be a major headache for us, it's gonna be a major headache for you for a very, very long time. He, if you deny the P D, he can still have chickens, he can still put household goods in his barns, he can still keep his barns up there. There's no reason to give him the P D other than to give him re, permission to increase, I don't mean just maintain, I mean increase, commercial activity, 'cause he will use those barns, they're not gonna set empty. He will do it, and it would, there's people to catch him, which is what he does all the time. And the only other thing, point I've got that, that has been brought up, and I wanna point it out one more time, is this, this drainage issue. Everything drains to the southwest, he's got buildings on the southwest corner of his property. There's no place to put any kind of detention pond that will help this drainage problem. I heard Mr. O'Connor say that it's the same drainage there was before he built the barns, back in 2012. Well, it still drains to the southwest, but now you've got all this, all this asphalt. You've got no permeable material that, that the water can go into, so it all comes off. It comes racing off to the southwest into that one little ditch, and then across all of our properties, Mr. Gratch's property and my property. It's washing out my driveway, I'm, I've got a quote that's somewhere between 15 and $40,000 to make sure that I don't lose my culvert and the end of my driveway, in which case I can't even get out of my house. You can't fix that problem. I mean, that, that's not a problem, you could sit here and say, okay, if he does this, he can do that. He has to tear down two or three barns just to put a detention pond in that will help that problem. So what we're asking you to do is just say no. It's the easiest thing in the world, you've already got a recommendation that, from your zoning people that says, this is the wrong thing to do. We believe it's the wrong thing to do, and we think the easy decision here is to say, no, go ahead and have your chickens, your wild turkeys that you wanna claim, whatever it is, but you don't need to do commercial activity on a property that is surrounded by residential properties and is zoned a state residential. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Becker, do you have any questions for?
No.
Thanks. Mr. Loeb?
I have one, one question, it's not what you said tonight, uh, said throughout the night, but you were the original landowner of the pro, swath of property, correct?
I was.
You gave property to your sons?
I was, I gave some property to my son Jason and his wife to build back in 2007, I think, somewhere around there. They built the house, um, and then we gave, my wife and I gave, uh, three and a half acres to James and, and his girlfriend to build.
Okay, and roughly, when did you, when did you buy, or when did you move in or build, or?
Um, I bought the property in about two, about 1995, paid off the land and then built the house in 1997, so I've been there 25, 26 years now.
Okay, and then, so, um, your son made the point earlier that when he moved in, there was originally a landscaping business that was operating there, uh, whoever the prior property owner was then. So was that?
Fox Landscaping, I think it was, and he had a couple of trucks and a couple of people that worked for him. We didn't even know that that was improper, unpermitted use of the property at that time. It was a long time ago, it really wasn't a problem at that time. Um, you had that one, you saw the gravel driveway, everybody went up and down, I mean, they, you know, a couple of trucks, a couple of times a day isn't a big deal. Makes a big difference when you're talking about, and I think Jason said something about 107 cars coming and going on during the day versus a couple of them.
Okay, I think that gets my, my, my question in clarity, is just as far as you knew there was a landscaping business that was there in the 90, 95, 97 timeframe, or?
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't know too much about the details, except that he only had a couple of employees and a couple of trucks that he went in and out with.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Mr. Loeb. Appreciate you and, uh, Jason giving me a tour as well, and you're both very gracious, answered all my questions.
We appreciate your time and listening to us.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you, Mr. Loeb, very much, thank you. Is there any else that would like to speak as an opponent of this case? Okay, just confirming, no one else would like to speak against this zoning case?
I can speak for you.
Yes, sir, go ahead, please. Oh, shh, I thought you were serious. Yeah, okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the opposition, and then I'll also give a chance for, uh, your side, Mr. Evans, if anyone would like to rebuttal, or, or have any additional comments they'd like to make. I don't need to swear again, sir, since I've already sworn you in, so please go ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah?
We've been here really long, we really appreciate it.
No problem, no problem.
I'm not gonna go point by point, unless any of you have a question, in which case I'm, I'm happy to go through it or talk to people who know more about it than I do. I wanna make two points. Um, I, I heard the, the elder, Mr. Gordon, say that, uh, if you deny the P U D, he can still use his barns. Well, if you deny the P U D, those two landscapers are gonna be out of business, or at least out of business in, in Union Township. That is not good for the community, it's not good for small businesses. These guys started their businesses in high school, they employ people, uh, and, and we've heard here the admission of, uh, the neighboring landowners, that landscapers have been on this property for a very long time. You know, keeping Dave and Griffin in business is not going to change radically the community makeup. To the chair's point earlier, I, I think that a P U D certainly gives the township more control as opposed to an agricultural exemption, if, if there is a change in the use, if there are new businesses, guess what? We have to come back, we have to hear public comment, we have to hopefully seek compromise. Um, it, it is better for the township, in, in my view. To, to the chair's question earlier about, uh, another landscaping business, I will say, I, I don't have personal knowledge. My understanding is that Mr. Gratch has a landscaping business, I think he's still here. If, if you all want to get to the bottom of that, perhaps he's, you know, going straight to the horse's mouth is the way to go there. I wanna wrap up, uh, with the following up on the question to the Gordons of, is there a compromise here? What, what can we do? Can we add conditions or modifications? We've been asking that, we've been trying. If somebody came to us and said, would you please move your dumpster 20 feet to the left? Or this light, can you put a screen on it because it goes into my living room? Or can you plant three trees here? We would do it. Regardless of what happens today, we will do that, we, we are committed to being a good neighbor. Uh, do any of you have any questions?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Becker, do you have any questions?
Oh, no, not at this moment, I might think of something. I thought, you know, I thought I had something earlier, and I couldn't find it, I would have gone, so.
We've all certainly talked a lot tonight.
I must have got it answered.
Okay. Mr. Loeb? Sure?
Uh, I think I'll have one for among the board and potentially for Mr. Yoder, but, um, as far as that goes to, um, is it, oh, Mr. O'Connor?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. No, just, uh, thank you for, thank you for, uh, the time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you very much, thank you. Mr. Evans, come back up, please.
I know it's late, and I don't really wanna say too much, but I do appreciate you guys listening and stuff, but, you know, I can only sit there and take it probably so long, but Mr. Gordon used to have a commercial building right next to the Sinco place, which I don't have a pointer, but he's up there, he had a little three-acre piece, and I just happened to be 70 feet along the side of it, and me being such a good neighbor that I am, if he couldn't have got this, uh, the drainage easement to go across my 70-foot, he never could have put his building in there. And that's commercial right there, and I'll, you know, and that's the truth of that matter. The other matter that's never even been talked about tonight is the driveway that comes in there. They all used to split the driveway, whatever maintenance it was. Ever since I got it, they've always wanted me to do everything to it, fix it at the end, do everything. And it's all on my property, but they all use it. I did the notion and put a driveway so there's no dust for all my people to drive. We didn't, we don't ever drive on the dusty part, that's what they drive on, okay? So, you know, as far as being a good neighbor, anytime I've seen an issue, I've tried to fix the issue, you know? And there has been, besides, uh, Jamie Fox Landscaping being there, Mr. Gratch has two landscape businesses. One you can see from the red barns right there, another one just up on the other side of Mr. Gordon, where he has a place on the Claremont County side also that has a landscape business. So, you know, and then Mort Bickle, that was Walter Bickle's, uh, relative, he's the one that had a service station business there forever. Just to kinda clarify that. So, as far as trying to be a good neighbor, I try to do it every time I can. So I've never told, you know, as far as Mr. Gratch's story, but I was gonna give him water, you know, that never was. I said, look, it's available, but you're gonna have to pay a little bit for the water, just because it cost us $600,000 to put it down to the side. So, I mean, it's there, we put all the fire plugs in, I'm sure the, the fire department, Stan Dymeling, he loved it. You know, we put an eight-inch line in instead of four-inch line or six-inch line, and we didn't get any government assistance for any of that, we did it all on our own. So, you know, Mr. Gratch was right, we used to be friends about this stuff, you know? And the thing that wasn't even mentioned too is, there, there's a 30 or 40-foot swath of property that Mr. Wesley owns between Mr. Gratch and us. Mr. Gratch doesn't really own right next to us either, so.
Mr. Becker, do you have anything for? Mr. Loeb?
I'll let you handle, if you have any of the compromise type questions or anything.
I do, so, um. Okay, so Mr. Evans, it does look like you had businesses running out of those buildings at some point. Um, did you know that you're allowed to, or did you thought it was fine? What, what, what was kinda going through? So, so I've, I've heard about this auto mechanic that's been in one of your buildings, so what, it, you know, did, did you know it was right? Did you know it was wrong?
I, I didn't know it was wrong, once I found out it was wrong, we, we moved them out of there, you know, plain and simple.
Okay.
You know, but he, he worked for Mr. Gordon, when Mr. Gordon needed to work on his car, that guy worked on Mr. Gordon's car.
Interesting, okay.
Sure.
Okay. Why, I'm just curious, um, but fir- first of, I think you've done a, well, I don't know, just, this is my perspective, 'cause I've seen the before photos, and now I see the after photos, and, and I've heard it from both sides. The buildings that were there were not in good shape, so I think you have done some good with, with remodeling the buildings. Um, you should've gotten permits for them, as it sounds like, um, but I have to give you credit there. Why, 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 do you have any other buildings these landscaping companies can go to? What, what's, what's the big thing with these companies staying there?
Well, I think Mr. Business in Claremont County, Griffin's mom and dad joined the property just on top of the hill.
Yeah.
And I know Dave, I don't know exactly where Dave lives, but he lives real close by, you know? So I think, uh, I know for a fact that, you know, Dave takes care of a lot of the different, uh, things around there.
Okay, the, um, how, how bad would it hurt their business if we vote no? What, what would happen to them?
I couldn't ask, I can't answer for them.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough, fair enough, fair enough, okay. Uh, the gravel driveway, um, I, I think every single complaint came from traffic, traffic, traffic. The gravel driveway, I think every single complaint came from traffic, traffic, traffic. My, just for my two times visiting there now, granted, I was there for total quite a few hours, so I think I have a grasp of everything. The gravel driveway, any idea how much your son's personal vehicles, you know, the landscaping business, use that compared to the asphalt road that you installed to go around?
When Mr. Walker did the traffic study, there was no traffic for those two or three days they did it, they went out through the easement that I have between the two Gordons, none of them did, okay? And if you're a smart person, it's a little bit quicker and a little bit shorter to go on the paved area than it is to go on the gravel area, okay? So, I mean, I don't know why somebody'd go on the gravel area, even though it is my property, and even though it is, it's in the industrial zoning also, just to kinda tell you that, it's not a residential driveway, it's an industrial driveway in the industrial part of the property.
Okay, fair enough. Last question, it's just, whether it's a no vote or a yes vote from the board, what kind of reassurance can you give these folks? It's kinda like your last opportunity to talk to the Gordons, but it's not just the Gordons, and there's several other people here, family members, friends, that you'll be a good neighbor, you'll comply with whatever the board decides, and I'm not trying to lean one way or the other, or anything like that, I'm just saying, because, just because somebody rules them, speed them at sixty-five, you go seventy on the highway, right? What kind of reassurance would you like to give them, whether it's a yes or a no vote, that you'll comply and be a good neighbor, that you say?
Well, I don't have any trouble with Union Township coming down, once, I mean, once, you know, once a month or once every two weeks, there's plenty of police officers from Union Township that come down to hunt, that visited on a regular basis, so it's not like it's, you know, I'm not trying to hide anything, you know, the fire department comes over, checks the fire hydrants and stuff, so, I mean, you know, I don't have a lock on the gate, it's not like, you know, we're selling anything back there or whatever, I mean, you know, we're trying to be good neighbors and trying to keep two young people in business.
Fair enough. Gentlemen, do you have anything else? Sir, please, go ahead.
So, two questions. At one time, you had the CAUV exemption tax treatment on that property, that got revoked. Do you intend at some point to reapply for CAUV?
I would have to pursue that with my tax advisor or something, you know? To be totally honest, you know, my daughter did have horses, okay? She was a hunter jumper, she did stuff down at Maria Knipf Farm, one of the barns, I was gonna put her horse up there, 'cause it costs so much to keep down there, it just so happened she got close to sixteen, she got a car instead, so, you know what happened to the horse, so, but that's how that one went.
Okay, that's fine. So, the last question I have was, the Anderson Township buildings, so you got, what, two and two-thirds of a building inside Anderson Township?
Well, it's really two, it's really two full ones and one sixty percent, and then there's another piece of those, that other one that's, you know?
A small building.
Yeah, where Jamie Fox was in for a while, yeah.
Yeah, so my question is, so you're, these landscaping businesses, is there any reason why you can't move those into those buildings in Anderson Township, therefore, outside of our jurisdiction, they're an industrial area?
I don't, I haven't talked to my attorney about that either.
Okay, 'cause it seems like, from a legal perspective, that would solve that problem.
You probably could, you probably could put them over there, but, I mean, I don't, I know one of them doesn't have a, one of them doesn't have a bathroom or, you know, facilities or something like that, and they were just, they were, you know, Mr. Bickle's barn from way back.
Okay. It's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Luke, anything else?
I'm just gonna, I guess, just, as I kinda went through with Mr. Gordon, but just the, again, I wrote down some numbers here for, primary concern was traffic, we saw, thank you for the traffic study, I know that, I've heard different, you know, terms here, but the traffic study showed a less amount of traffic than I think we heard earlier, so I think that that gives the board perspective there. But are you aware, are you willing to work on stormwater management, lights, noise? I know it's hard to control people, but it sounds like there's defecation or bathroom, you know, items. I'm not sure what he has in and implements on the commercial vehicles, if they have a landscaping company there for their storage out front, but then dumpsters and screening, are those things that are within the realm of possible?
Yes, yes.
Like, that's all I did, question I had, thank you.
Mr. Evans, thank you very much. Appreciate you, thank you, thank you. Yes, hold on one second, yeah, please, yes ma'am, no, no, hold on, sir, yeah, yeah, please go ahead, yes ma'am. I have not sworn you in yet, so I will have to. Andy, sort of tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing about the truth, so if you got?
I do.
Great, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Toya Estes, I live at seven five four six Pinehurst Drive in Cincinnati, Ohio, four five two four four, and when you talk about traffic, if you live in a residential facility or area, you have more traffic there than you ever would out in this farm area. Now, even with the livestock out there, there's gotta be people coming out there to feed, water those animals daily, so you're gonna have traffic anywhere you go, but I'll tell you, I, we got more traffic up on this hill where we live now than you can imagine. I mean, there's cars parked on both sides of the road, there's children riding bikes, there's cars going up and down all the time, so, I mean, Mr. Evans could take that whole hill and build homes, and have all kinds of people there, and I don't know what his, you know, total goal is at the end of the day, but he's trying to keep it natural out there. He made a mistake, I think, starting with the businesses, but he's trying to rectify that mistake, and these people have stopped him. They come and they film his business, I've been there when they get out there and they have a camera, and they're watching a crusher of some concrete, you know, grow up a belt, and it's got a little bit of dust coming off the crusher, because when it crushes it and it falls into the pile, you get some dust. What they call the air pollution people, you know, he rectifies it by, you know, putting water on things, they'll call, you know, they don't water their yard when they're trying to run a business, they'll call and report, you know, I've had, we just have people all the time, they stand out and they film his gravel pit, and if they don't have the truck washing machine on, he'll call in on that, he'll call in on because he'll sit there and he'll watch, when trucks leave, if they turn right or left, I don't even know all the rules out there, but he'll call on that. It's just, you know, it's an ongoing issue, and somebody's gonna get hurt, it's ridiculous, this needs to stop. They need, they need to stop what they're doing and let people run a business, let people work in this community and get along. And I'm a total outsider here, I'm not married to Mr. Evans or anything, I'm a friend, and I've been over there, I've been there, the first time I went there, this is when Mr. Evans was building the barns, I got my dog out of my truck, and he came yelling out at me, that dog needs to be on leash, and I was on my property, he owns hundreds of acres out there, and that dog was not, did not have to be on leash on my property, on his property. I mean, it's just ridiculous. I mean, I don't know how much vengeance that they can keep on bringing towards this whole situation, but it's gotta stop. He, you know, he's done everything he can by making a driveway around their whole area, and no one goes on that road, in fact, they got cones up, nobody would wanna go on through those cones or go back there. This, these stories of people coming around and knocking on their doors, I've been over there, there ain't nobody knocking on doors or looking for anything, the only people that were back there that were renting, they'd do their business and come and leave, there was no freaking selling things or anything like that. It's just ridiculous to sit here and listen to these accusations, and, yeah, I think there was a mistake made, but I think it's, we're trying to rectify that mistake now, and I think people ought to realize that and get along. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else on this side, though, that is for the, would like to rebuttal or anything? No, okay, perfect, okay, and then, last round, and then, and then we'll go ahead and close it, but please, come on up, sir. Not, I wasn't saying that you're the last one, I'm just saying like, last round of rebuttals, if that makes sense.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to address something that Mr. Evans said about me having two businesses. I have one business, and it is not a landscaping business, my, and excuse me if I get this wrong, but my NAICS or my SIC code is, does not align with landscaping, it is not a landscaping code. I do have, if you go to another frame that's a little, little to the, to the south, I can probably clear things up for him and you. Just, so, you see the county line there, there's a building with a gray roof just to the left of the pond, to the south of the Anderson Township part of Mr. Evans's property. That's my barn, that's a cold storage barn, it has electric, but no plumbing, no heat, and we have a seasonal business, and we work out of that. That side is industrial. Now, Mr., I need, now, from, any questions about that? Okay, if you go to the south, to the south of Mr. Senior Gordon's place, I have fifty acres there, some of which lies in Union, some of which lies in Anderson, and if you can find that frame, I'll show you that, that, that building that he's referencing and, and where it, where it is exactly. Okay, so, if you come all the way down the county line to the bottom of the screen, you'll see a pond there to the left. My pond is directly to the south, or directly to the north of my building, so the building he's referencing is actually in Anderson Township, it's not in Union Township, that's all I wanted to say. And when, we're good now, very good, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please, please.
Thank you, very brief, really just one, one point that came up during the course of this, with respect to a compromise or what Mr. Evans would or would not be willing to do. There seemed to be some questions, would you be willing to do this, or this, or this? And he says, yeah, sure. Our point is, what's before this board now is a plan that was submitted as part of a PD application. That's the plan that you're being asked to vote on. What I'm, the sense I was getting was, if there could be a compromise, if he could do some other things, would that be acceptable? I guess what we would say is, you cannot approve this PD application on the hope that there will be some other plan that is agreeable to the parties. But what's before you tonight is the plan that's been submitted, that's required to be submitted as part of the PD application, so if there were going to be other changes to that, it would be inappropriate to approve that, 'cause once you approve it now, any changes to that would have to go back through the process, either as, I know you probably have like a minor modification or a major modification, and we'd have to determine what that is, so, my point is, if the board is looking at what may be a compromise, or what may be able to be done to make this acceptable, you can't approve this plan tonight. If the hope is that, you would have to have a concrete plan in front of you about how the stormwater is going to be addressed, how the other issues are going to be addressed. So, all that really leads me to is saying, once again, the appropriate action tonight would be to follow the recommendation of the zoning commission and deny this application. If another plan wants to come forward in the future that addresses some of these other issues, it would work its way through the process, but the appropriate thing to do tonight would be to deny the application.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else that'd like to speak? Okay, with that being said, I'll go and close public comments, all right, and gentlemen, I'll open up for board discussion.
I've got a list of different things here, but I wanna stay brief too, okay? And I think I just hit a little bit of a summation point, and I just to share, again, as board members, the conversation that we can actually ever finally have when we're all sitting down together in a board meeting, as I think that was earlier in the day, that you stated that we weren't all at the property together, so, feels like a, feels like a week earlier now, but.
Do you want Mr. Becker to go first?
Let me just share a sentiment, and then, then I'd love to hand it off. With, with kinda the back and forth and rebuttal of the rebuttal, what I really just had a sense of there was, something I highlighted earlier, what we always do, we always ask for in the PDs, especially if there's something contentious, where can there be any middle ground gained to alleviate the specific issues that are at hand, and put that in the recommendation, and put that into potentially how it moves forward, and work with staff, or where that may go. But what I have recognized, there's a very firm request for stay in Claremont County Court and stay in the court, and a sense of what I've just heard there was, that getting to any type of compromise, we're not the bigger picture here, we're part of something, but there's a much bigger picture going on that we're outside of, that's outside of our authority and limitation and everything, and that's the court case, but I'm not, I'm not gonna pretend to be a lawyer, but it sounds as if there's no compromise ability here, because that could impact a court case that's outside of here, so I just wanted to share that perspective, don't know if any of you gentlemen picked up on that, that's what I just clearly picked up on, so, thank you.
Mr. Friss, share, please go ahead.
Well, you know, I'm starting to get a feel for what the police go through, and, you know, they have this, these domestic disturbances, and they show that people's houses and neighbors hate each other. Boy, I'm not a cop, I have enough trouble being a trustee. I wanna, I guess I wanna start with a correction to something I said earlier. I referenced the Brumfield Township versus Fiorito, if that's how you pronounce it, case, having to do with, as I read through that a second time, that was a reference to commercial storage of equipment that was in a agricultural, otherwise agricultural exempted area, and there wasn't any reference to whether it was personal storage. So, and as I thought that through, I thought, well, I guess if there's no prohibition on it, then it's allowed, however, I would also point out, an Office of Sayota Township Zoning Inspector versus Puckett, in two thousand fifteen, in the fourth district, the court there ruled that to get that agricultural exemption, the use, the primary use must be agricultural, that's not explicit when you read five nineteen twenty-one. So, with that, you know, when this case, you know, I guess when I immersed myself in this case, when it came to my attention, and I'm reading the letters, the original letters that were signed off by Corey Wright, dating back to two thousand twelve, and I kept reading this thing about this agricultural exemption, what does that mean? Well, you know, I've been doing letter reading, you know, yeah, I read this, you know, got this in the mail, read this too. I also reached out to Legislative Services Commission in Columbus through a sitting state representative, and they did a research request for me, which I found to be very helpful, which, which pointed me to these, this case law, which I've been, you know, referring to tonight, a couple of them anyway. So, you know, this is a tough case, and as I've been thinking this through, it's, you know, there's, there's no easy answer here, and it's kinda like, so, you know, to deciding one way versus the other way, it's like, which decision do I hate myself the least? You know, I feel for both sides. So, you know, I guess as a, I guess first off, when I read those letters and understood what that agricultural exemption was, and putting myself back in, you know, two thousand twelve, you know, two thousand thirteen when those letters were signed off, what did Corey Wright know, and when did he know it? You know, what did he know at the time? And then a more current letter, Mr. Berkey signed off on in sometime last year. And then a more current letter, uh, Mr. Berkey signed off on in, uh, sometime last year, the same thing. What did he know, you know, at that time? I can find no fault at all with anything that Union Township has done. I think, I think when Corey Wright signed off on this, on the hay barn for cattle, at least that was the intent, that was his understanding. I think that was very appropriate. So I find no fault with any of that at all. So, uh, you know, again, thinking all this through, and then I kind of asked myself this question. If this had come to us ten years ago, before any of these buildings were built, and this was the intent of the property, and we were asked to do a P D at that time, what would we do? Uh, you know, based on, I guess, the concerns we would be hearing, assuming we'd be hearing the same things, I think we would be inclined to say no. Um, of course, I'm speaking for myself here. My, my two colleagues can, can, you know, maybe have a different opinion. That's fine. But that's happened before as we know. The, um, so, you know, i- i- if we were gonna vote no, or I, I'll speak for myself, I, if we're gonna vote no ten years ago on, on, on this case, shouldn't I vote no also today? So that's one, one of the considerations I have in my mind. And, and of course, how the zoning commission ruled. So, I get where I'm going with all this. At the end of the day, I think what I'm feeling more comfortable with is going no on the P D and just letting this whole thing play out in court. And that concludes my remarks. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Mr. Luke, sir.
Um, I'd like to gauge, I hear, hear your thoughts, Mr. Becker. I'd like to, um, put some information out. I'm just gonna go through my little bit of the list here, okay? So, uh, I noted that original footprint of that building was Hamilton County. Um, I, I've heard some debate on that. I don't, I don't know what that, you know, pulls apart too. But you can, I can see from the pictures as far as there's a building there that was originally there that it was on the property line or, you know, I don't know how you unwind time on that. One thing that we often consider with this board is, um, property owners' rights and, and their right to use their property and their economic opportunity. And so that stands in my mind. One, I want all the residents, proponents, opponents to feel heard and listened. And I'm proud to serve on the board because I think that we've done that. And I know everyone has investigated and dug in and, um, visited the properties and, um, you know, the inspections, uh, have, have followed up with that as well. So, um, so everyone should feel heard and listened. And I appreciate you guys researching the issues and really digging in. Does highlight some things that stand out to me, and this is, we'll carry this forward, I think, in the future areas that we can make considerations on. But there's some areas tonight that I've heard that scream of the property maintenance resolution that we've talked a little bit about in old business. Uh, that's not necessarily for a P D tonight, but, um, and then also we've got this weird dynamic, like I said, how do you unwind time? But you got Anderson Township right there. And then I know that the Horizon Plan is dated, basically. The land comp plan needs, those things need looked at, updated, reevaluated. I mean, uh, you know, uh, so that's just things that stand out in my mind. And then, you know, the significant thing is those landscaping businesses that have been there and have been there for years. And if it's a different business, they're landscaping. I mean, I know landscaping is a very present prevalent business that someone's able to do out of their, their home garage or shop. Again, I'll always try to think about the precedents that are set, um, you know? And so, uh, those are, those are things that, that stand out. What I want to absolutely consider and hear from, uh, you know, I mean, Mr. Dil- or Mr. Becker, you kind of made yourself clear there, but I want to hear from Mr. Dil's, uh, his perspective on, um, you know, I think the, the things that stood out, I stated them earlier. I think you got the list. I don't need to repeat that, uh, screening, traffic, that type of aspect. But, um, I think, um, I'd love, I'll pass, pass the floor to you, Mr. Dil's, see what your perspective and your thoughts are there, cause I like to be able to, I want the community to be able to work together and, you know, move forward. I feel everyone wants to move forward and heal, so.
All right, great. I, I think I have spent, I counted when I was coming up to today, roughly twenty to twenty-two hours I've spent on this case. Um, I have done a lot of research, um, and I wanted to make sure I was caught up from the past to current, to present of everything. And so, um, I guess let me backtrack a little bit. I, I truly hope as, as chairman of the board that runs this meeting, uh, that everyone felt like their voices were heard and, and that you felt like you got as much time as you needed, uh, and, and, and we didn't cut you off. We asked questions, easy questions, tough questions, probing questions, but I wanted, hopefully everyone felt like they were heard and, and got to state their case. So to put some perspective on this, I've taken, I've taken a lot of notes. Uh, so, uh, I think I understand, I think, the best that I can, at least in the amount of time that we were given on this case, a lot of consideration and I've talked to a lot of people. Um, I've talked to Mr. Yoder for some, yeah, some length of time. I've talked to our other law director, uh, Mr. Connor Conover, sorry, uh, for quite some time. Talked to Ms. Ayers quite some time, Mr. McCormick. Uh, I, uh, placed a phone call into Mr. Wright, but, uh, learned he's on vacation and so I couldn't get his perspective. Uh, I called, uh, the building department, spoke to them for a very long time to get an in-depth of their perception of what they think. I, I talked to their law director, which also works for our prosecuting office for Claremont County. I've talked to them for a long time. Uh, I called the engineer's office and I talked to them, talked to them for a long time. I called our auditor's office to get a background on this. So, uh, I visited with Mr. Evans, took me on a, a tour of his property, visited with the Gordons, took me a tour on their property, where they're at. I mean, I feel like I've exhausted the information that I can obtain, at least in a short amount of time. And so, um, from my understanding, now, I had a phone call, a lengthy phone call with the building department. And gentlemen, I'm gonna tell you how that conversation went. And, uh, um, and I want to make this clear, that the building department and none of their documents, which are all public records, they made it crystal clear, nowhere does it say they want any of the buildings to be knocked down. That was, they, he made that crystal clear to me. Uh, that was the first thing. Mr. Evans is currently right now in violation of three things, uh, and I'm gonna read them off, so you all understand that. Uh, the first one is, uh, Mr. Evans, the, uh, the house that is currently being built under construction, the pond, uh, has not been approved, um, and it does not meet current code. Uh, and so I wanted to make sure you're aware of that. That's, that's one violation that the building department told me. Second violation is the water runoff, uh, the roofs and the asphalt. Water runs faster on roofs and asphalt than it does, say, on grass and soil. So the raw water runoff issue. And the building department made it crystal clear, they are not allowed to give recommendations. They're not. They're basically yes or no, black or white, does this meet it? Yes or no? Similar to our zoning department or our, our, our zoning board that this did not pass. They are not allowed to consider a motion. They're not allowed to consider where it's at now, where it's in the future. There, our zoning that, that voted this down can only see black and white. Uh, and so we are allowed to consider emotion. We are allowed to consider your feelings, your thoughts, where we're at, uh, in the future of, of the township. They are not. I want to make that clear. So, but the building department said the water runoff because of the roofs and because of all the asphalt, uh, and that, um, and that's the, uh, that, that corner right there where all the buildings kind of meet up there on the property lines. And, and the buildings, uh, the apartment made it clear, they're not sure how to take care of this because there's asphalt and buildings all there. Where, where are you gonna put a detention or retention pond there to stop the ru- fast running water going off into the other properties? Uh, did say that this was possible, again, not a recommendation, just to make sure it's clear, that you could tear up the asphalt and put water tanks under the asphalt and that would suffice the building department. Um, that, that was, that was okay. Uh, the last thing was, was what we're all talking about was there's no building permits for the non-agricultural use. Uh, the building department did say that your electric in all the buildings did pass the last time they checked. Can't talk about current day, but last time they checked, all your electric is perfect. So, basically, um, uh, also for the buildings to be in compliance with the building department, Mr. Evans would need to get a third-party structural engineer to come out, check all the buildings out, make sure they're safe, make sure they apply to all applicable Ohio building codes, which also needs to include the foundation system, the walls, roofs, basically all the components that make up a building. Um, also it needs to be certified that they're safe to be occupiable. Um, they would need a third-party engineer for this. And, and I asked him a good timeframe to get all this done, to get permits, and they said a hundred and twenty days was sufficient. So it seemed like it was a reasonable amount of time, basically have a structural engineer come out, draw up the plans, draw up everything we're doing and submit them to the building department for them to approve. Uh, after it is approved, then, um, it, he has up to two years. First year to break ground and then every owner can apply for a one-year extension. So I'm gonna say two years, even though it's a one-year plus another one-year to break ground and start the construction to solve these issues that where he's not compliant with the buildings. So, um, we've got, got a couple of options. Uh, and I do not, and I made this crystal clear to every department that I talked to, engineer, auditor, building department, the county and the prosecutor's office. Uh, I do not want us to undermine them. They undermined us. I want us to all be on the same page. Uh, I made that crystal clear. And so, um, if it stays, tell, tell me if I'm wrong, if it stays residential, what would stop Mr. Evans from build, I'm gonna round up and say it's just about twelve acres, from selling off to Ryan's or Dree's or any other homes and just putting up a hundred and fifty homes on the twelve acres of property? We could, I guess we could vote it down essentially, but it's a state residential. Or even talk about the possibility of multifamily out there. Again, state residential, which would tenfold increase the traffic count. So, tell me if I'm wrong, gentlemen, we're open discussion here. If it is a planned development and Mr. Evans is a business guy, if he decides to sell off the property tomorrow, if it's planned development, we have total control of, of what the usage is and, and if any additional use, if, if a mechanic shop goes back in there, they have to come back here to vote, correct? Uh, and so it, in my opinion, we do have more, the, the township, not we, cause we'll eventually be out of office someday and who knows what the future of the property is. But, uh, um, I'm looking at the traffic studies. Uh, I've lived in several residential neighborhoods. And in my opinion, this is, assuming this is correct, assuming this is, you know, this is correct, uh, I wish the neighborhoods that I lived in were this low. This is not that, that significant, what I'm looking at, per day traffic count. So, um, unless we ask Mr. Evans to vacate the gravel easement and strictly use his asphalt driveway, I don't think you'd have a problem with that. I, I mean, he, he built a driveway to go around for the, the, uh, the vehicles going in and out. I think that's reasonable. I looked up, uh, and, and here, here's the, so, so I'm hearing several arguments, it's the landscaping companies that's the problem. Or it was the old, the only thing we can talk about is the now, cause the, the mechanic got kicked out when we discovered it and our zoning inspector found it and he, he's done. So it's the landscaping companies is the issue, but I've also heard about the buildings as well. And, and I think this is splitting hairs and semantics, but Mr. Becker, you brought up a good point. I wrote this down. So if he takes landscaping companies and puts them in Anderson.
I'm, I, I was.
Same, same thing?
That was in my.
What, what problem do we solve? We don't solve any problems. And but then that part is just, it's like we wash our hands of, okay, Anderson, you deal with it. Hamilton, Hamilton County, you deal with it. Um, and is that, is that?
So it industrially.
Doesn't solve anything.
It doesn't solve anything. Doesn't solve their, doesn't solve their problem.
Solves his problem.
Solves his problem legally, but, uh, um.
It's a clean answer maybe for the board, but it's, 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 it's.
And, and you, and guess, and here's another thing, the building that's, I'm just taking, again, I'm looking at the line, I'm gonna say sixty percent Anderson. There's another business out of there that we're not even talking about. No one's really even brought up. That has been, I've, all I've heard is landscaping, landscaping. There's another business. And you wanna know why we're not talking about it? Why? Why aren't we talking about it?
Cause the, what he just posed, it's in the, it's whatever.
It's in Anderson Township. That's why we're not even talking about it.
They're able to operate out of there.
So that, that won't solve the residence problem either. So, and I, I did a quick, see, I, I don't know if it's the operation of the business or the operation of the landscaping companies, uh, but I did a, a quick, let me look here, uh, where am I at? Landscaping companies that are round or near the round bottom area, you know, Madison Tree Care, Davidson, Gilbert, Evans, Young Entrepreneur Landscaping, uh, those are all down at the bottom, right, right there on the round. But there is quite, there's a handful of quick, while I'm up here, landscaping companies in the area. Um.
May I, uh, interject?
Please.
So you asked, you asked us a question about the state residential and, and, you know, if he sold the property to a developer.
Of course you have to prove, you know, all the bills, but yes.
So, so it's curious, what do we need to approve, what don't we need to approve? I, so I was just looking up, I, I found it in, in, uh, Article Six, Section, uh, eleven and subsection one. It says, uh, you have to hit two acres. So unless a developer wants to do something on less than two acres, then they would have to come to us for approval. Otherwise, if no approval, yeah, they can build houses all day long as long as they're on two acre lots. That's my understanding, if I'm interpreting the code correctly. So, so anything else, that we'd have to approve it anyway.
Yeah, I, I, I'm kind of pulling on that same thread. And Mr. Becker, may I interject on that or you?
No, no, we were not.
I'm pulling on that same thread that you're saying there. From that aspect, again, we, we get to deal with these type of questions all the time, right? On the more contentious zoning cases. Hearing what, um, the Gordons, uh, as opponents have put forward, but it's exactly that point. And I know it wasn't necessarily said tonight or elaborated, but when I visited the property, Mr. Gordon made it very clear to me that it was, um, you know, the denial and/or the, the demolition of, of the buildings at least. And I only share that because I said, my concern there is it's like, I think of the analogy of this doesn't fix your problem. Because if, let's just say that it went to, these buildings are being demolished. I think of someone that owes ten thousand dollars and they pay you, but they pay you a penny a day, doesn't necessarily change anything. I'm not saying Mr. Evans would do that, but I'm saying, wha- what, what does that solve? And what benefit does that bring overall to the township? And Mr. Dil's, you, you present, I think, the very good question as far as that goes. It's, I mean, I'll view it from this perspective. You deny the property owner their right and their economic opportunity to do with that property that, that they see fit. And yes, we can make comments and address and control when it comes to stuff like the visual, the screening, the curb cuts, the stormwater, how it impacts others. But to deny outright the economic opportunity, which you can do with that property is where I know we've kind of always firmly drawn somewhat of a line. And so to that point, let's say that that happens to Mr. Evans and it's economically doesn't make sense to him or whatever he may choose to do. Well, it's the state residential route. Then it comes back to this board to say, hey, I'm potentially looking at this being, you know, either one. Like you said, no, no holds barred. They don't even have to come here. I think the house is on. Or, or it's, I wanna subdivide it into, you know, it's a hill, but it's a beautiful hill. And I think you can see downtown Cincinnati from it, cause I took a drive up to the top. Uh, that would be, I think, high-valued, at least property that would be very tightly dense packed in, cause the point that you're saying about the street count and the traffic. And I heard traffic was one of the number one issues or concerns. And, um, and yeah, I think that the situation as painted as it is now, from one side and both sides can be, it is so bad, it could be much worse, um, provided the township has no, no recourse right now to try to help alleviate the concerns that I think we've all been well aware of and brought in, uh, this evening on that. So I, I appreciate you sharing that perspective. I'll hand the floor back over.
So something else to, to go on. And I didn't really, cause Mr. Gordon educated me on this. So currently, and you tell me if I'm wrong, Mr. Becker, cause I feel like you know that law better than I do. Currently, as agricultural use, another landscaping company operating on one of those buildings is illegal. Is that correct?
Correct.
Mr. Evans decides tomorrow to buy that landscaping company out. He now owns it. Now it's legal? Is that what I'm understanding?
No.
That's what Mr. Gordon just said.
I think, I, uh, yes, I, I heard what you said.
Mr. Gordon said, if you own your own landscaping company and run it out of your building, that's legal. If you run a landscaping company, you don't own it, that's illegal.
He was refer, so, okay, let me.
Am I right or wrong on that?
Take a step back. He was referring to a state residential.
Correct.
What I'm thinking in terms of, he is gonna get the agricultural exemption, or he, he enjoys the agricultural exemption. And under that agricultural exemption, you can't have commercial activity other than agriculture.
I gotta tell you, my opinion is agricultural exemption is out the window at this point. Uh, well, I'm, I'm not even, I mean, if, if he, that's, that's his call if he wants to go down that route, but I'm not even like, you can't get a tax break for that, being agricultural exemption, clearly. Uh, especially if you're running businesses out of there, the landscaping companies and the one in Anderson Township, forty percent Union Township. I just, I don't, I don't see that.
How does he keep that, how does he keep building on? The one that's got the, the setback problem? Yeah, the, I mean, he's got the, he's got the setback problem within, you know, inches of the property line. And I think under E R, he's gotta hit me like five feet away.
Under.
I don't know how that building survives unless he argues agricultural, the agricultural exemption. I don't know how that building survives unless he argues agricultural, the agricultural exemption.
Unless you do PD with an exemption.
Yeah, unless we give it to him through the PD.
So, so, but, but I, what I, what I don't like though is, is the semantics. He takes his landscaping companies, throws them in Anderson, now we're good, let's move on. He takes, he takes, he buys out the landscaping company on a, and, and it's okay, because he owns it. I'm, I'm going off what Mr. Gordon said, assuming that that's, that's, that's correct.
I, I don't know that it is.
Let me interject, let me interject one point on that, the very short, how it was shared, I don't know if it was buying out a landscaping company or it was presented the case that Mr. Evans would be able to utilize all of that location for his own commercial vehicles with his own landscaping company. And I know that that's not what's being proposed right now, so to, to one effect, I think the, the route of denying it opens that up, that again, if I'm someone that owns something, I want to have some type of user value out of it, so, you know. I, I think that's why, again, why we, why we always side on potentially the, the property owners.
My, my, my point bringing that up was just the semantics.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you on the semantics.
Moving to Anderson now, well, it's, everything's status quo, nothing changes, but we've, we've kicked the can down the road, right? And we would be fine with it.
I, I don't see those kicking the can down the road.
Doesn't solve their problem and.
Well, and, you know, we don't, we don't, we don't need to solve their problem, we only need to decide, are we gonna do the PD or are we not gonna be due to PD, and if we're gonna do the PD, what restrictions do we include?
True.
If we don't do the PD, Mr. Evans has a problem, he has to do something about those landscaping businesses. One of the things he can do is, at least in theory, move them into the Anderson Township buildings. That doesn't change anything for the Gordons and, and, and friends, but we can't solve every problem in Union Township.
Yeah. Are you supportive of, of pursuing a PD that is amenable to trying to fix the situations of which we can control?
Yeah, so I'll tell you where I'm at.
Okay.
Um, this is probably one of the longest motions uh, I've ever been a part of, um, in my year and a half. Oh, actually, I do have a question, Mr. Yoder, question. We approved the planned PD hypothetically, and Mr. Evans is found in violation, what happens from there?
What do you mean by in violation?
So um, we, we, we approved the planned PD and he operates another mechanic business out of there. Well, he didn't come back to the Board of Trustees for a major amendment, or um, you know, uh, or he, he doesn't comply with the building department, the county, whatever, uh, take care of the water, water runoff situation. Phil, Phil doesn't get his permits in a timely manner, just kicks that can down the road and, and doesn't matter about the days. He violates something of the contingencies of our, of our approval, what, what happens?
It's a zoning violation, whether it's part of a planned development or otherwise, it's a zoning violation that the township would treat like it would any other. Um, send a notice of violation if necessary, go to court, seek declaratory judgment, whatever, it's a zoning violation.
Okay, okay. Um, so I, I have wrote up, um, and again, I've put so much thought into this, I think I took my entire day, I was in, in, in putting thought into this, I, I have wrote up a, a motion, it's, it's lengthy, so I'll, I will read it slow, but to answer your question, Mike, where I'm, I'm, I'm leaning towards um, is for me personally, Mr. Becker as well, um, putting quite a few contingencies on here, but approving the planned development. Um, I like, I like it being controlled by the township, and I don't like, um, I don't, I would not like to see one hundred and fifty homes go up on twelve acres, I, maybe I'm being exaggerative, um, but I, I would not, I would not like to see that there. Uh, but I have seriously, from based off the, the fifty years of photos that I've seen, there's been buildings similar to that, not that many, but very similar. And, and, and so the, the, the buildings, and, and, and the before and after, um, that, those are a lot prettier, a lot cleaner than what I, what I've seen, I'm just looking at pictures from what I, what presented to me. Um, and I think this would restrict Mr. Evans from moving forward and adding any additional businesses, um, and, and to keep the landscaping companies there. That's my personal thought, but I have, I have quite a few contingencies with that. And so, and if it goes in violation of these contingencies, then, then it goes back to where it's at now that he's found in, in violation.
If you wanna keep the, if you wanna keep the landscaping businesses inside the Union Township buildings, as opposed to the Anderson Township buildings, then yes, we need to do that PD.
Correct, so that, you asked me if that's where I'm leaning towards, that's where my leaning is, just saying.
Before you start on that, it's just as you're saying, this isn't just to prolong our discussion up here, but it is, you know, we, we saw the flashback of time of the pictures, to keep, I, I guess what pops in my mind on that significantly is the fact that you look back in time on that and you said, yeah, there's more buildings now than there ever was, well, yeah, if you look at all of Union Township there is, I mean, uh, Matt Beamer sent back there, but he could probably tell you the, the population back in nineteen, you know, seventy and nineteen sixty, I remember looking at some charts. Um, but I know that between the nineties and now, I mean, it's, the, the township has doubled in size, twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand, so. Uh, I mean, it, it, look, this is something that comes natural territory of suburban area that is growing, and these are, these are things, again, why we need to revisit our land, our land plans and everything else. Mr. Dills, let you carry on, thank you, thanks for letting me share that piece.
Well, did you wanna have anything else to add before I read this motion?
I, I guess a couple of things, I, and, and I, I wound up squeezing them then, I think regardless through, through the additional conversation we had, but as I was making my closing remarks earlier, um, I did need, I, I did wanna mention, you brought it up, that the Anderson Township buildings are, are, are an option for, for Mr. Evans at this time. And, and again, I just wanna reiterate that it seems to me, based on my understanding of, of the higher body code and case law, of course, I'm not determining, that uh, you know, Mr. Evans could successfully argue in court that his property is entitled to agricultural exemption, hence, you know, as long as that's the primary use, his, his building is concerned, his setbacks are, are exempt from our zoning, uh, and, and we can't do anything about it. But you can't do any kind of commercial activity on that property.
Which would mean the elimination of landscaping companies, right?
Correct, well, the movement in the Anderson Township buildings.
True.
I just, I, I hear you were on the semantics with that, I just, aside from this PD, I just, I have such a hard time with feeling like kicking companies out of the township, and that's why I feel like that, that symbolizes by what they can do it here, but they can't do it here.
So tell, tell, tell me, so you're, you're basically saying you're for the planned development without being for the planned development? You're saying that I'm gonna deny it, but I'm gonna allow him to move those two building, to those two businesses over to Anderson Township, um, and, and we, now there's no control for the township?
Well, that's his option, if we deny the planned development, his option is to move, okay, you know, he could kick him off the property entirely, but one thing he could do is move him into the Anderson Township buildings. I mean, that's entirely up to him, outside of our control.
Into, they may not see it this way, but to help the residents, if he does that, everything stays the same, it's agricultural exemption, and they still have all their problems, whereas if I was to approve, to approve this.
Yep.
There's now control over it, that's, that's uh.
So if I summarize it, um, Mr. Becker, you support Mr. Evans' use and property rights of that, as that stands with those buildings like that, but not the PD, because the solution can be the landscapers move into the other part of the building and kind of problem solved.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and, and I guess another concern I have with PD is I'm, I'm imagining or envisioning an incremental return or movement toward being the industrial park that it had been, I guess, a year ago. And, and obviously, people on that side of the room don't wanna see that happen.
I would not like to see that either.
And that's why I think under, you know, without the PD, and, and they're just relying on state law, which is, you know, the agricultural exemption, again, five nineteen twenty-one, is to, to determine what they can and cannot do on the property, as opposed to we making that determination through zoning, or the PD in this case.
Okay, so I'll read this motion off and uh, and we'll move from there. Oh, is, is there any further discussion?
No.
Okay, okay, so gentlemen, I will entertain a motion to approve the request by Mount Carmel Farms LLC for a map amendment to rezone the property located at forty-three seventy Mount Carmel Road from a state real estate residential to planned development, subject to following conditions that must be completed within one hundred and twenty days. Number one is address any concerns from the county engineer, Claremont County Water and Sewer District, Claremont County Building Department, the Union Township Fire Department, and any other partner agencies have, that have jurisdiction over the proposed development prior to the issuance of any zoning certification. Number two, obtain all necessary permits for the buildings and their uses from the necessary partner agencies, including but not limited to the Claremont County Building Department. Number three, provide complete zoning applications and suitable corresponding site plans, measurements, setbacks, uses for all structures on the property. Number four, provide additional details for the proposed landscaping plan, including providing enhanced plantings between the subject property, any parking on the subject property, and the adjacent residential properties. Number five, relocate the dumpster locations away from the adjacent residential properties and provide adequate screening. Number six, provide a photometric plan that shows all lighting being downward, directed, and of sufficient intensity to eliminate without projecting onto adjac- adjacent residential properties. Number seven, a signage plan will ultimately need to be submitted if applicable. All freestanding signage should be limited to monument signage capped at a height of not more than five feet from the finished grade, subject to administrative review and approval. Number eight, the applicant would need to provide anticipated average daily count, traffic count, he's already provided that, uh, volumes to help make final access and parking determinations. All proposed parking and loading spaces determined necessary would need to be striped and signed accordingly. Similarly, any required driveway aisles would need to be stripped and, oh, I'm sorry, would be, need to be striped and/or have arrows for one-way access drive to direct traffic in the proper manner on site. This is an item that can be addressed administratively by the staff. And lastly, number nine, the applicant should get the northeast corner of the property surveyed to determine if there is in fact a driveway encroachment onto the neighboring property. If an encroachment is identified, as the current plans indicate, the encroachment issues would need to be addressed with the neighboring property owner, which is the heights.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Any more discussion, gentlemen?
So just to be clear, it's the, it was uh, was it point number two, was it? Or correct me here, which one was it?
For, for what?
Allows the um, yeah, I think it was number two.
The uses, correct.
That will allow the landscaping businesses to continue.
Number three?
Uh, I'm gonna, no, no, so, so, so number, item number two is obtain all necessary permits for the buildings and their uses from the necessary partner agencies, including but not limited to the Claremont County Building Department. And uh, Mr. Yoder, is that correct? Would that fall under the uh, the current landscaping business, is that correct?
Ask that again, I'm not sure I'm following what you're actually asking.
Uh, was that uh, item, I, the, the landscaping business, could I talk to you about this? Which, would that be item number two that would fall under, or item?
So item two really pertains to getting all building permits required.
Mm-hmm.
Um, associated with the uses of the building. And the, and building codes will oftentimes take into account uses as it relates to how you have to construct something. But the very fact, I mean, the intro to the motion, you're approving the motion, which they've applied for approval to use these buildings for amongst other things, landscaping businesses. So yes, you are approving the use of the property to be used for landscaping businesses, but amongst other things, item two says, you gotta get a building permit for this from the building department for whatever uses you're going to actually put in that building, or those buildings rather.
Correct.
Does that make sense?
Does.
So it is number two.
It's not number two, it's listed, so the plan is, as submitted to you, is to use part of those buildings for landscaping. By doing the motion that Mr. Dills put forward, you are approving the plan as it's submitted, so the plan says, I'm gonna use part of these buildings for landscaping. By approving that to your plan, you're saying that's okay, it's not. This, this, as it's been listed by Mr. Dills, is the extra conditions that you're asking to be submitted with that plan. The, by approving the plan in general, you're submitting, you're agreeing that landscaping uses as they're described in the plan are okay.
Okay, I understand.
And I think also to Mark's point, as he graciously whispered, if you look at condition, condition three, provide complete zoning applications and suitable corresponding site plans, measurements, setbacks, uses for all structures on the property, so there won't, a more detailed.
So it also includes the chickens, the storms.
Here's where the landscaping businesses will be, here's where this will be, here's where that will be.
Got it, okay, makes sense. Any further discussion, gentlemen?
Uh, I've just got, uh, you know, the ways I'm, we've had a lot of discussion, but for actually coming down to the summation of my decision, um, my decision is, look, I recognize that this is a contentious zoning case, um, it's evident that there are issues related and unrelated to the planned development, notably, um, notably, uh, the neighborly dispute that has come to attention. Uh, there's a term used earlier that said it was crazy, and I've heard that on the opponent's side, and I've heard that on the proponent's side. Uh, so which I often uh, find that the township is being called in and acting as a referee. Um, and throughout my tenure, you know, I've consistently represented all residents and ensured that the township does not intervene in disputes that are beyond the scope of this board. There are some things that we cannot intervene on, um, but I will say there's resources there, if someone's, you know, in the woods, you know, we can make a phone call to the non-emergency line for dispatch, or if someone blocks your, your road and restricts you from leaving, like I heard the young man say earlier tonight, um, he can make a call to the non-emergency line as well, if it's not, but I'd like to get beyond that, I'd like to get resolution, um, so, um, again, that's where we're limited. So this is on, this is on, 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 on the community and neighborhood, uh, to work together. So while, while we consider the PD application at hand, we must recognize that it is also just one part of a larger picture involving the ongoing dispute. And although this forum cannot address all the items in contention, we have the ability to address the, the planned development, so. With that, I, yeah, I support the motion that you made, and that's, that's my, my, my comments to support, uh, where my vote will be.
Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
No.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you all for coming out tonight, and uh, we do have one more item on our list, in case you wanted to take off your more welcome too. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
I'll give them the accent, we'll do our last one. Mr. McCormick, can you, can you email the parties involved this list and make sure they all receive it? Well, I would say the Gordons and, and, and Evans, all, just make sure that everyone receives it.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Does this often put the cutting of the gravel driveway as part of?
We're getting ready to continue our business, can I give you my card, and if you'd like to give us a call tomorrow, the staff will talk through all of it with you, is that where?
Thank you.
No, no, it's just cause the public session of the meeting and then it would, there's everything off.
Yeah.
Sir, we still have some public business left to do, so if you wanna hang out for a minute, that's okay, or if you wanna chat with staff, we'll talk to you tomorrow.
Okay, uh, gentlemen, old business, item A, motion, um, hold, Miss Ayers, did you wanna talk about this at all or no?
Uh, this is simply what we discussed the last time about amending the meeting rules to include a consent agenda. So I've provided each of you with what that would basically entail. Um, the consent agenda is for items that are considered boutique, ordinary, only to be considered one, don't be considered as a group.
Perfect.
So this would just make that change for the next meeting.
Okay, perfect. By the way, officers, thank you for staying the night, appreciate you very much, yeah, all good, thank you, thank you guys. Okay, um, so gentlemen, uh, I'm gonna entertain a motion to amend the meeting rules for the Union Township Board of Trustees to incorporate a consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Okay, discussion, gentlemen. Mr. Becker?
Uh, I'm for it.
Roger that. Mr. Lo?
Just, just to reiterate, we brought it up in the last regular session, uh, meeting and had discussion on it, and we talked about those agenda items there, of what this would look like, and that was a great presentation, so thank you, Miss Ayers, and thank you for, um, yeah, Mr. Chairman, thanks for taking up, putting it on the agenda tonight, on board as well.
Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Uh, gentlemen, it's not on here, but uh, let's just briefly, is there any comments that either one of you would like to make? And before we wrap up. that either one of you would like to make, before we wrap up, and I'll start with you, Mr. Becker?
Uh, sure, you know, I just, just, I, we'd love to discuss-
I apologize, but, um, given that this is considered a special meeting of the board-
Oh, fair enough.
We're limited to what is on the agenda.
No problem, no problem.
In that case, no comment.
Okay, and, uh, I'll, I'll entertain a, a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Were adjourned at ten forty-eight P.M.
Thank you.